Hi, everyone.
Greg, if you could please make me a co-host and I'll be able to share my screen, which will have the agenda on it, please.
I will do that. I did that earlier and didn't realize it disappeared when you went into another session. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Should be good to go.
How are we doing there, everybody? Everybody make it back to this one? Trishery, how are we doing there?
I count six board members. Chair Brown.
Okay, looks like we have everybody. We have our translator here. David, thank you very much.
I see Rowan is Maddie here too, and I just not see her.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
We got Maddie and Rowan too. They're here.
Yes.
Dr. Navatney's here, so we are pretty good to go.
Proceed, thank you.
Okay. We're reconvening to regular session after executive session. Just like to say again, thank you to our last meeting for for David, for our translation to for staying late. Appreciate you. And so we are going to start with our flag salute with Director Dehart.
All right, Chair Brown. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Dehart. Appreciate that. All right. Agenda tonight, a little bit, maybe a little bit quicker than the last meeting. But we'll get through public comments. We have, we had to put off last time. Maddie and Rowan are going to do, from student reps are going to give us our impact on bullying at the high school. City of Newburgh, Doug Rux. Then we have nutrition services program update from Shiloh. Now, we have current legal expenses from Nikki Fowler. Executive search update from Lisa Freely. Under new business, declares own for a position banquet with Lisa Freely. Potential impact of ending the mask mandate prior to March 31st, Dr. Navatney. And patron complaints, Lisa Freely and Tyler Smith. That's on our regular meeting so far, so we will go right into public comments with Lisa Freely. Lisa, are you good on that?
Have to remember to unmute myself. Otherwise, no one will hear the 30 minutes I've got of joy to bring. As always, I probably am going to completely mispronounce people's names. Please be grant a little grace. I'm not very good at that. I'll do my best. This is from Abram, Abram Shelberg. At Dundee Elementary School, there were several unnamed students who were disruptive and loud. They were rarely told no and don't do that. They usually got fidgets or gum, unlike the kids who paid attention and actually turned in assignments. They pretty much got special privileges because they were disruptive. Going into Chehalis Valley Middle School, I thought the situation would get better, but it has only gotten worse. To this day, they are generally inappropriate. They are still loud. They disruptive, miss a lot of class time and work and usually don't even stand their seats for half a period. How will they continue into the second semester having this so much classwork and class time? I just don't understand how this will continue. Jordan Moore. My name is Jordan Moore. I'm a 20-year Newburgh City resident, the parents of students in Newburgh Public Schools, a volunteer inside the school and an advocate for the medically fragile students in our district. Their diseases are usually invisible. They are the most vulnerable among us, the least of these, and they are being bullied. Certain civil rights acts, certain civil rights, such as the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and the Individuals with Disabilities Act of 1975, ensure that all children with disabilities are entitled to a free, appropriate public education to meet their unique needs. There are students in the Newburgh School District with medical complexities outlined in their IEP, IHP, which is an individualized health plan and a 504 plan that states student at increased risk of negative consequences if he or she became infected with COVID. Before lifting being the mask mandates, some mindful actions would be consult with the district's school nurse. Ensure that plans for medically fragile students are secure. Reinstate strict indoor contact tracing protocols, offer vaccination booster clinics, invest in proper ventilation and updated health filters. Rushing a mask removal vote without the above infringes on the civil rights of medically vulnerable students in our district. I leave you with the Merriam-Webster definition of the word bullying, which reads, quote, abuse and mistreatment by of someone vulnerable by someone stronger and more powerful, unquote. And I am providing the email above on 212 to be read during the 222 board meeting entered into the public communication records and to be submitted to all board members and the interim superintendent. I've submitted public comments several times since August 2021. They have not yet been selected. Brandon Casey. My name is Brandon Casey. I'm again asking the board to make masks optional now. I'm reminded of the quote I try to live by every day. That quote is, quote, "The only thing necessary for evil to prevail is for good men to do nothing," unquote. Needless to say, evil has been prevailing now for almost two years. And now is the time for elected board members to do what what we elected you to do and make masks optional now. There is again not a shred of scientific data to support masking our children. I'm not going to go over all the statistics again, but there have been two previous school board meetings where parents called in regarding masking. And in both school board meetings, every single person that called in opposed mandatory masks. I understand masks will supposedly be lifted for kids on 331, but there is absolutely no reason to continue suffocating our children and damaging them both socially and physically. They, these masks have already done so much damage that I am sure we don't even know the extent of the damage they have done. Other school districts have made masks optional and are going to be making masks optional in defiance of the tyrant in Salem. The funds that can be withheld are federal COVID relief funds, not general funds that are always available to schools. So I ask you to look out for our children. Don't let this evil prevail by doing nothing. Make masks optional now and end the abuse of our children. That is what we, the parents, want and what we, the parents, expect. We urge you to vote to have our interim superintendent, Dave Navatney, draft a new mask policy, making masks optional as soon as possible. If politicians in large sports and entertainment gatherings do not have to wear masks, then our kids should not have to either. Please follow the example of the Redmond School Board and end mask mandates now. Do not wait till March 31st. Let our kids breathe. Allow kids to relax and just be kids. Sam and Janet Steele. Please follow in the footsteps of the Redmond School District Board and end the mask mandate now or as soon as possible. Please draft a new mask policy as soon as possible that make masks optional. Robert Sharp. The Redmond School Board voted Wednesday evening to direct their superintendent and district staff to craft a new COVID-19 policy by March 2nd that makes masks optional and gives parents the authority to make that decision for their children. I urge the board to do the same as quickly as the bylaws allow. This will save our children from an extra month of having to wear masks. I urge you to follow Redmond's example and vote to have our interim superintendent draft a new mask policy as soon as possible that makes masks optional. Christina Lakely, parent of a Newburgh High School student. I'm writing to you today to urge you to follow the Redmond School District's lead by making masks optional for students and staff. Due to the fact that cases are rapidly declining, it no longer makes sense to subject our students who are at very low risk to constant mask wearing. I would also caution you to seriously weigh the cost benefit of mask mandates in the future as they seem to do more harm than good. Sincerely, David Klaus. Dear school board members, we have had enough and our children have had enough. Many of them have missed two years to schooling. We have literally sacrificed our children for this pandemic and now we want to vaccinate them against the flu over and over again. Enough is enough. Many of them will not learn to I think she means read well, because they cannot see the lips of their teachers. We need to end the mask mandate now. Done. Never thought I would live to see the day where we would emulate China. Hello, we are here. Thank you. Paulette Alexandria. Dear board members, I'm writing you today to urge you to follow the Redmond School District's lead by making masks optional for students and staff due to the fact the cases are rapidly declining. This is a duplicate. David Klaus. Yep, I've read this one already. I submitted it twice. Jody Hogan-Dom. Hello, thankfully you survived the recall and while I no longer have kids in school, the children who are still in school are important to me. They are our future and that future is being stifled by mask wearing and social distancing. It is time to unmask the children. The voters kept you in because you are making a difference. Don't stop now. Get those masks off children's faces. I know funds might be withheld because of it, but if we get back to reading, writing and arithmetic, we'll manage, please. Please stop forcing masks on school children right away and let them have their freedom back. Thank you for your consideration, Shelley Kay. Please change the mask mandate immediately to at least one that allows the option for those that wish to wear one, but does not require it for those that do not. The sooner the better. Time our kids can see each other's faces and live normally again. Judy Robinson. Newburgh School Board Members, this is long overdue. I urge you to please follow the Redmond School Board's example and make masks optional as soon as possible. Enough is enough. Please do what's right for our kids. Nicole Llewellyn. Good evening, Newburgh School Board Directors, Penner, Pyros, Powell, Dehart, Brown and Shannon. Thank you for the opportunity to make public comment at this evening's board meeting. Many of us in the community are wondering what your plans are for the future of the Newburgh Public School District. I imagine hiring a superintendent and assistant superintendent and other administrator administrators positions is a top priority. Then there are many staff positions that need to be filled. Parents are searching for answers as to how you are going to get back on track and focus on the tasks school board directors typically do as all our children are feeling safe, respectful and valued. And that all staff feel supported, respected and valued. Research, research shows that in this type of environment, both the students and teachers succeed. We would welcome a transparent overview or summary of your educational plans for the remainder of the academic year. It would be fantastic to have a memo sent out to all parents listing the educational priorities of the timeline for accomplishing these goals over the next four months. It seems like a fair request as students, staff and parents have been functioning under uncertainty, worry and frustration. In the honor of true transparency, I believe that believe there is an important question that needs to be answered by the board majority. Are you working to destroy the Newburgh Public School District? I ask this because extremists are verbally stating that public schools should be destroyed. They are doing this by using fear tactics such as stating the teaching of a college level critical race theory is being taught in K-12 public classrooms. This is completely false. Nothing works better than fear to excite parents, causing them to pull their kids from public school and impulsively place them in private schools, charter schools and homeschool environments. The extremists love this since it is much easier to disseminate incomplete and false information, racism, homophobia and other extremism outside the environment of a public school. So Directors Powell, Dehart, Brown, Shannon, is that the plan for the Newburgh Public School District? Susan Delventhal, parent of a Newburgh Public School. And that was our last comment for today.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. You're getting quicker at this all the time. Couple of years, you'll have it down pat.
Let's not go too far into the future.
I want to see if you catch that. So, all right, our next thing up here, we had to put this off, so student reps, Ron and Maddie, you guys are going to be talking about the impact of bullying. So are you guys ready tonight?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Sorry if I lag out a little bit as well. My internet has not been very well recently and I just had to leave, but hopefully it'll stay strong through our presentation. Um, so our presentation today is bullying in the Newburgh High School. Um, by Madison and I, we are both student reps. Next slide. First, we wanted to start off with resources because it's really important that people know who to reach out to. If someone watching has been bullied or is being bullied or if they have kids who are currently being bullied, these are places you can reach out to. We have a wellness center at the high school and so there are onsite counselors who you can speak to. Their job is to make sure that our mental health is doing okay and that we feel safe and that we're thriving. And so you can go talk to them. It's confidential. And that's a really great resource. Additionally, there is always trusted teachers and staff. Talking to an adult that you trusted at the school is really important because the bullying issues can't be handled unless someone files a report, an incident report. And so getting someone that you trust to do that with you, if you're not comfortable doing it alone, is also really important. Finally, there is the anonymous tip line. That's posted in the cafeteria as well as on the Newburgh School District website. I know at the middle school, at Mountain View at least, on the back of our ID cards, they had different resources like a suicide hotline, a sexual abuse line if anyone was struggling and also the anonymous tip line. So I think for the high school at least, we don't have anything on the back of ours. So we proposed maybe doing something similar, like putting extra resources there so students could have easier access to it. Next slide. The first thing that we experienced most of or that we talked to people and they had experienced most of was verbal harassment. It often came in constant belittlement from peers or body shaming. Additionally, it's very common to hear people using derogatory slurs in classrooms towards people of color, the LGBTQ and to people with disabilities. And so that's a really big point that I think we struggle with in general is just not being sensitive to other people in like the kind of language we use. Additionally, in the hallways, it's really common because people seem to think that since it's such a short experience where you're passing somebody in the hallway that there's less accountability for it. But that's definitely not true and all things that people are saying are going to be taken to heart. So it's really important to be conscious when you're saying things like that around so many people. Oh, sorry. I had physical bullying as well. Physical bullying, I, we found was less of an issue in the high school. It is definitely still a problem that needs to be handled, but it's more common in uh, more open areas. And so it's more easily reported by people. And these can be seen by hall monitors. We have a lot of those walking around to make sure passing periods are safe. Additionally, we have the campus security. And so those are easier to report by peers or people who saw it. And so that was less of an issue that we found in the high school.
Um, for the last type of bullying, we put cyberbullying. And I think cyberbullying, something that is often overlooked because you can't see it. And it's not. It's not as well known because it it's, it's online and it's usually it's not at school. It's once people get home. And it can look like sending mean text messages to people or sometimes people don't even know they're being cyberbullied. Like you can just text people mean things about other people and so people don't even realize it's happening. Uh, I know that's an issue. I mean, there was a big incident towards the beginning of the year that was really bad. With cyberbullying, there's also people make accounts and post pictures of people that are, they don't know, they're getting their picture taken. So cyberbullying is probably one of the bigger ones now.
Next slide. Are you good, Maddie?
Aren't you doing how common is bullying?
Um, yes, I can cover it. Uh, the other thing we talked about was how common bullying is. It's definitely made a change where one, like we said, it may have been physical bullying and pushing people over or, you know, throwing books or doing stuff like that. It's now subtle jabs where it might not seem that big on the surface, but it can definitely build up over time and just making small mean comments at people can definitely dig away over time and it shouldn't be acceptable in any manner how big or small it may occur. Next slide. We're good, Trishy, for the next slide. Thank you.
Uh, so one of the big problems is people just don't know that people are being bullied because there's a failure to report. And a big issue with that is students don't feel comfortable with people, staff members in the school, whether it's just a staff member or a teacher. They don't feel like there's someone that they are comfortable with enough that they can go talk to them about these important situations with, which I think is a big problem. That's one of the main reasons why situations aren't taken care of. And another thing that is overlooked is conflicts with students and teachers. Students don't, aren't necessarily the only bullies. Teachers can pick on students too, which is also a problem. I've heard like my classmates talk about teachers that they, they don't feel comfortable entering their classroom because they feel like their teacher doesn't like them and like they're just going to get picked on and they don't feel safe entering the classroom. And so that's, that's a problem too. And it goes both ways. Students can also pick on teachers. And I think that's a really big problem is conflicts with students and teachers. Uh, next slide.
Um, we also talked about effects. So this year especially, Maddie and I talked to some of the admins of the school and found that there had been multiple families changing schools because they felt unsafe in the environment that had been created. This can cause lots of issues down the line, like creating gaps in education and making students feel more isolated when they're actually changing schools. And so it can be harder to make friends and that can also lead to more bullying at wherever they may have transferred to. It also plants fear in kids at a young age. Some of the students were fearful to ride the bus because that's where their antagonizer was. And so that could mess up transportation for their family. Additionally, some students had to try and change their routes in the hallways so they didn't have to pass by whoever was bullying them and this made them late to classes and made them also struggle with academics. Finally, there was mental health issues as one of the major problems with bullying. Students who were bullied who were bullied, sorry, found increases in their anxiety, depression and lower self-esteem really affecting their day-to-day life even when they weren't directly being bullied. It transferred over into a lot of other aspects. Next slide.
Um, so to conclude, we didn't have a whole lot of time to get a lot of statistics necessarily. And so we had this idea, we put together a survey of like different questions about like if you've ever experienced bullying, if you've ever seen it, like what kind? If you feel like there's a trusted adult, if you feel like you've ever been picked on by a teacher, stuff like that, that we wanted to send out just to get more like, so we had facts. Um, however, uh, it wasn't able to be sent out because there wasn't really enough time and students weren't might not have been able to know about it. And then it would have just been, there wasn't enough time. And so we had an idea that if like this, we think that this is a really important thing and problem in our school that we could put together another committee because I know there's committees for certain topics and that we could do a committee and then work on this separately and like more in depth, if you want, like more information about bullying in separately, we could do it in separate schools. So you know exactly what schools have more problems than other problems or other schools. And, but that was our idea.
Hey, Maddie.
Yeah.
If you, how much time, if you guys had like, say two weeks is pretty fast. I get it. If you guys had a month to do a survey, would that be enough time for you guys? Or what, what timeframe do you guys need to put something together with data and things?
I think that that would probably be pretty good. Um, we'll hear Maddie in a second as well, but I know that the school has done other things similar um, in previous years to check in with mental health and see how the students are doing. It's usually run by the wellness center. But I don't think, I don't recall personally us doing one last year. And so I think getting a, like kind of in the middle of COVID and kind of getting out of it, hopefully. I think that would be a really important survey to also send out. What do you think about time, Maddie?
Well, I was talking to Greg because I was, um, sending him our survey that we had made up to see if it would be able to get sent out. And he was telling me that there was a, a culture and climate or climate and culture survey that would be sent out before spring break. That kind of asked similar questions about bullying and just like the the climate and how things are going in the school. So I think that would be a really good one to look at. And we could definitely do a report on that once that's in and they're doing that before spring break. And if you want, like, we could always go into say like an elementary school or a middle school and like talk to people and just see like if they experienced bullying or not, like if we really want to go like into it, like we'd be willing to do stuff like that.
I, I guess I just don't think there's a wrong way to go there. I mean, I think what you guys feel like you can have the biggest impact. Obviously, middle school's rough, you know? It has been for everybody forever. So, you know, and then in grade school too, it'd be you know, whatever you guys feel like you have time for and you know, that if you need any help, you can ask us on the board. I know Greg was helping you there. But it's, uh, it's really, really helpful. I appreciate it a lot. But keep going. If you guys got more tonight, keep going.
Um, we are all good for tonight. We are open to questions if anybody has any about maybe what was experienced or what's been going on, anything in the presentation.
Okay.
Yes, I would like, that was really great, um, information. And I like the idea of adding the extra resources on the back of your ID cards. I don't know if we can look into getting the high school. Um, getting that stuff put on the high school ID cards. I think that would be really helpful. Um, and then any suggestions, I didn't hear anything in there about like suggestions on how we can address this or how we can stop it or like, I know, like, I think in the past, there's been like assemblies that, you know, the anti-bullying. I think thing that went around in previous years, but I don't know if they are, are you guys doing stuff like that in the schools right now? Or is there any like assemblies or anything that where you guys are in the classrooms where the teachers are talking about addressing bullying or talking about this topic? So.
We're not doing any assemblies right now due to COVID. There's sometimes they're online, like they'll do an online assembly like that's already pre-made, but nothing like all together where we all talk about stuff together.
Yeah, I think maybe covering like a unit or something, trying to implement it into health class, you know? Just like speaking about it, because I know we do in middle school, but I think it's definitely going to be more. I think it's changed and evolved into high school, how it might have been different than middle school. Because I think as students mature, they also find sneakier ways to kind of, you know, make jabs at people. And so I think talking about maybe in a health class or just like a brief thing in a classroom one time in one of like your periods to talk about it. I think that would be important to tell people how to handle it or how to reach out to people and stuff that they don't know.
Great. Um, thank you so much for doing this, girls. Do you, do you feel like an ad hoc committee would be uh, something of value that you could, um, that the committee could, could look into possible solutions and get down to the, the reasons why the bullying is happening and how to help the bully?
I think that a committee would definitely be more helpful for trying to find, um, like Director Powell was asking about like how we can try and improve the bullying situations and to try and stop bullies and help people become more aware of what they're doing as well. I think the committee would be better for taking action towards those sort of things. I think it's kind of hard for us, you know, as students on our own to really do anything too much about stopping it really, but I think the committee would be a great way to really deal with it if we think it's a true prevalent issue.
Yeah, thank you, ladies, just to echo Director Powell and Pyros. Um, you did an amazing job and this is a huge topic with a lot of facets. It's really larger than an assembly or curriculum. It's really cultural based. So changing a culture of a place is incredibly challenging work, but you know, we have to start somewhere. And I know our counselors do an amazing job and many of our educators and students do as well. And I think you two are really representative of that because I And I think you two are really representative of that because I think talking about it and learning how to interrupt it is huge. So I appreciate y'all bringing attention to this and I support anything, but first and foremost, your students. So please don't feel that this pressure to solve this is on you too, but getting your, um, experience perspective is incredibly helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Maddie, Rowan, you guys are great. Thank you so much for, uh, this presentation. Uh, you guys did a great job. We really appreciate you. Uh, you know, reach out to us, let us know what we can do to support you guys in this. But, uh, Director Penner's right, it's not on you. This is a whole district-wide thing that we all have to work at. And, um, so please, uh, you know, if you feel like you're a little overwhelmed, but you have a good idea. Uh, reach out and we will, uh, definitely support you guys, cause this is something that's. I think everybody agrees on that it's, it's one of the top things we have to get fixed. So.
Chair Brown, may I, may I make a motion to, that we look into, that we set up an ad hoc committee? To, to research the causes of bullying and the effects. And the possible solutions using our, our staff and our students as members of the committee. As, as, as a response to, to their, their presentation tonight.
I'm open for that. I, my thought was right off the bat, I wanted to contact some of the administrators and see what they have going first. So we're not stepping on their toes. But then I think that that's a good idea, Rebecca. Um. Let me reach out to those guys at the, the, at the admin level and see what we've got, uh, if they have anything in place or we're not. Getting in their way, if they already have like a plan, but, uh, I'm sure that they would, uh, appreciate the help. And then maybe, uh, you and I can talk here in the next couple of days and how that committee would look. And, uh, you know, would you wanna be part of something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Navani has the sand raised.
Doctor Botany.
Yeah, sure, Brown. I just wanted to clarify, uh, if you would like administration to go ahead and do a quick assessment. Of the bullying prevention efforts that we have underway at the middle school and high school. Uh, we can do that and get that information coming up to the board relatively quickly. And also I have some direct knowledge as far as bullying prevention efforts at the state and regional level. That we could bring to bear to support the efforts that Rowan and Maddie have. And I'd be happy to share those resources with them as well.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Well, I think that was awesome. Everybody, thank you for your, your contributions and, uh, Dr. Botany, thank you. We'll wait for. For that and then Rebecca will just chat about that and see how we can, uh. If there's anything we can do moving forward, uh, after we get that report from Dr. Navatney. So thank you, everybody. Maddie Rowan, great job.
Thank you guys for the opportunity as well. Very much appreciated.
Hey Rowan, can I tell you something?
Yeah.
Every time you'd move your right hand like this, Maddie would appear and I was thinking like she was almost in the same room, but she's not even in the same house. That was pretty cool. So you guys did great. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to Doug Rux from the city of Newburgh making a presentation. Doug, are you here?
I am, Mr. Chair. How are you this evening?
Doing awesome, man. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So I have with me this evening, uh, Nick Popanuk from Tiberia Solutions. Nick was our financial consultant. I'm putting together this particular proposal. So he'll be here to answer any questions you may have on the financial side. Um, so next slide, please. So we were before you back in June and gave a presentation. So the city of Newburgh is proposing an urban renewal plan. It covers the downtown area and the riverfront area of Newburgh. So this is our slide, uh, kinda showing all of the work we've done over the course of the last five plus years to get us to this particular point. Um, the graphic identifies that we put together an economic development strategy, a downtown plan, a transportation system plan. We've updated what we call our functional plans. It was our infrastructure plans. We did a community visioning program and a number of you participated in that, so thank you very much. Uh, we've done work on a housing needs analysis and economic opportunities analysis. We've done some updates to our functional plans to address the riverfront and the infrastructure it needs. And we spent the last couple of years working on the urban renewal program itself. So the top graphic on your slide is the riverfront area that city council adopted in, uh, twenty nineteen in August. And then the center slide is our downtown improvement plan area. And then the graphic on the right is just the location of various urban renewal districts around the state, which there are many in many communities. Next slide. So we went through a feasibility study first. That's the first step in preparing an urban renewal plan. So the city created an ad hoc committee. Uh, that committee met six times. In putting together that feasibility study, we did a lot of community outreach and efforts. It's noted on your slide. I won't go through all of them, but we did have a webpage and back sheets and we did videos. We continued to brief our planning commission and city council. We also informed all of the taxing districts as we were moving through that process. Next slide. So the culmination of that was the feasibility study. And Nick was part of that process. The council accepted that study back in July of twenty twenty. Which set the stage for the next step in the process. Next slide. So next came the formation of the Urban Renewal Agency. So the city council did that in August of twenty twenty. Uh, at that time that they declared that there were blight conditions that existed within the proposed urban renewal area. And those blight conditions were related to public infrastructure. Next slide. I took a month off. Well, more or less. I took a few weeks off, but we reconvened back in October. Um, in the second round was preparing the urban renewal plan and report itself. And so the ad hoc committee continued on. They met eleven times over this particular time period. Again, we continue to do public outreach and engagement opportunities. We continue to brief our planning commission and city council. We also shared with the taxing districts, uh, material that was being prepared and reviewed by the ad hoc committee. And then back in June, we made a proposal and went to all of the taxing districts that desired one and gave a presentation. Um, we went to a public hearing in August of twenty twenty-one. And there was a comment regarding the issue about some of the area being outside of the city limits and within Yamhill County. So we went back to the Newburgh City Council and they directed staff to basically revise the proposal. And that revision was to remove lands that were not annexed into the city limits, but were within our urban growth boundary. Next slide. So that leads us to the revised proposal. And so you see a color-coded map on your left-hand side. The ad hoc committee broke the proposed urban renewal district down into areas A through H to address infrastructure. So the new proposal is an area of five hundred and forty acres. The maximum indebtedness amount is a hundred and twenty-five point eight million. Uh, the downtown is connected to the riverfront area by River Street and Blaine Street. And we did finish up annexations of properties. We've now annexed the bypass, uh, the former mill site. And some properties south of the bypass and just north of the Willamette River. It's always important to note, and I've reminded peoples, we've gone through this pro- process, is that a renewal does not increase your property taxes. Next slide. So we broke this down. I'll go through the different slides for the sub areas. So the one on your left is area A, that's the mill site. It has new transportation infrastructure, sewer, water and storm drainage systems. So the brown lines are the new transportation underneath those roadways is the new infrastructure. Uh, there's also an esalenod that the community identified when we put together the riverfront plan. And that goes from River Street over to the, what we call the waterline bridge over by our water treatment plant. So area B is south of the bypass and to the west of River Street. It includes some area that was annexed in late twenty twenty-one. Um, the brown areas there again are transportation improvements and the green lines you see are related to trails. So a part of this is the bypass trail that CPRD is working on. Uh, a trail along the north side of Fourteenth Street and then the other portion of the esalenod to the west. Of, uh, River Street. Next slide. So we are, you see, uh, this is north of the bypass and kind of to the north of Weatherly Way. And this is really for a new, uh, sewer lift station and supporting, uh, gravity lines and a force main line. To accommodate development. Some of this, uh, area in area B actually will drain over into this new lift station. Uh, area D on the right-hand side is between basically the bypass and Ninth Street. It includes an extension of Blaine Street down to college. Uh, improvements to college, again with sewer, water and storm improvements, a railroad crossing. This kinda goes back to area B as well as area D is. O dot rail requires that we upgrade that for per day street pedestrian safety and then some pedestrian improvements on Ninth Street. Uh, which is, uh, of course, close to Edwards Elementary. Next slide. So area E is River Street, basically from the bypass moving north. And improvements to that roadway, again with transportation, sewer, water and storm. And F is a continuation of River Street. And so there's a theme of River Street going basically from Fourteenth Street all the way to First Street. With infrastructure improvements. Next slide. Area G is on the left. This is Blaine Street. Uh, this area is identified for infill development and redevelopment for higher density residential housing. And so we have insufficient water and wastewater and some additional transportation improvements that are necessary. And then the downtown area, which there are a number of things that are identified. Two new public parking lots in the future. The blue lines are new water lines. The oldest part of town, we have two-inch, three-inch, four-inch lines and we don't have the fire flows to do the infill development. We've got some traffic signals, um, at Hancock and First Street on Blaine. And then an intersection improvement identified at Hancock and College Street. There's also some road diet, what we call road diet, that's to create broader, wider pedestrian sidewalks. And narrowing down the travel lanes and/or in some cases removing travel lanes to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. Next slide. So the impact to the Newburgh School District. Um, so with urban renewal, it will spur redevelopment activities. And so many of you've seen is that the mill is coming down. Most of the buildings are gone. Um, that complete demolition should be done in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, we've talked before with the, with the board members is that there's an indirect impact to schools. And so based upon the state's funding methodology, uh, taking your property taxes. And then combining that with the state school fund and so forth and coming up with the per pupil allocation. Is that there's a minimal impact actually on schools and the education service district. So the impact identified in the modeling that we've done over a thirty-year period is just a little under forty-seven million dollars. Next slide. So this is just the breakdown over that thirty-year period of those foregone revenues that would occur, uh, from the Newburgh School District. And again, at the bottom there on the right-hand side, you can see the total of forty-six point eight million. Next slide. So the duration provision, so this is something that was very important. My lights went off. I guess I need to move. Um, is that the ad hoc committee made sure that this plan would not go more than thirty years. And so essentially that means that the last kind of debt service that would be issued would be at about year twenty-five plus or minus. The final projects would be completed. The plan would be terminated. And then all of that assessed value that's been created by installing this infrastructure and working with development would come back onto the tax rolls. And be redistributed to the taxing districts. Uh, the, the committee also wanted to have a five-year review. So that's every five years. And so this would start after we've, uh, received the first tax increment revenues. We would coordinate this with all of the taxing districts and share the information. The intent is to look at, are the projects occurring as we generally have modeled? Is development occurring and allows the opportunity to make some adjustments to the program? Of course, all done in coordination with the taxing districts. Next slide. So before I get to the questions, it is important to note that we do have a statutory requirement to do a consult and confer process, which we have started. I sent material to Dr. Navatney. So that occurred on December tenth of this year. He also got an email from me. So he was great. He responded quickly. Um, and so that starts a forty-five day, uh, consult confer process. That process ends on March twenty-eighth. And during that period, uh, taxi districts have the opportunity after these presentations. To provide comments back to me and I will get those to the city council. The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the urban renewal plan on August fourth of twenty twenty-two. So, Mr. Chair, that will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Doug. I'm sure there's some questions in here. I'll, I'll start. I got one. Can I throw one at you?
Sure.
I was just curious, um, from the old mill site, um, it was just down the other day. Um, with all the new, uh, things being built in there. Then we have the rail line that comes heading west out of there. And then comes over to Blaine and heads up to Blaine Street. How's that gonna look in the future? Will we need that? Is that part of that whole development down there? Cause that's good for industrial?
Yes, it is. It's one of the, uh, few remaining rail-serve sites in, I, I would call the northern portion of the Willamette Valley. And so we are actively working with the current property owner request, uh, responding to what's called request for information. From development opportunities and a number of those are looking for rail-serve sites. So that's why in those graphics I identified, based on conversations we've had with the Oregon Department of Transportation. Is both of those rail crossings need to be upgraded and improved. So they'd end up with the gate arms. All the pre-warning signal systems and so forth, protect both the pedestrian, the bicycle and the vehicular safety. And of any trains that will be moving down that line onto the mill site.
So that train would, would connect up to like behind, um, the old Allen Fruit building?
That is correct. It would connect with, uh, what I will generically call the Portland and Western. Here it's called the Willamette Pacific and Yamhill County portion of that. But yeah, right to the south of PPM Technologies, the old Allen Fruit is where the rail line connects. And that would allow train traffic then to flow up to the northeast, back into Portland. Or you can go back to McMinnville and back to Corvallis and then come back up Albany and then come back to Portland.
Is that being used a lot now? I mean, that, that line?
It's being used some. We have about one train a week that comes that serves ultra-quiet floors. They're on Main at the railroad line. And during the demolition of the mill, they've also been moving some, uh, different scrap cars and so forth in and out of the mill site.
Okay. I'm just, I was, a question I had the other day was like, as we move to more, uh. Electric-type transportation, things like that down the road. It seems like the rail thing is gonna be more important. To spur development, uh, to have that access to that, to, to get away from trucks mainly.
Yeah, we've, we've looked, I and the committee and others have looked at it is that when you're moving, you know, uh. Raw material in, moving it in bulk on, on train cars is more economical in many cases than trucks. If you can get some trucks off the roadway and get it onto rail, that's better. There'll be a day when we have electric, you know, engines that will pull trains around. Technology will eventually get there. Um, so this is a way to take some truck traffic off of the roadways.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Could you explain the situation that you mentioned that the state, um, school fund? And that the property tax of the forty-six million, does that mean we will need to pay into the urban? Um, plan forty-six million dollars through with, through thirty years?
Nick, would you like to try to answer that one?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so Nick popping up with Tiberia Solutions. I'm a public finance consultant in the state of Oregon. Oregon's, uh, school funding system is convoluted. But at its core is the principle of equal funding for all school districts across the state. That is achieved in a roundabout way because every school district does levy their own local property taxes. And some of those tax rates are much higher than others. And some of the property tax bases that those, uh, school districts have are much higher than others. And so how can you have property taxes locally, very dramatically? And still achieve equal funding for all districts for every student across the state? The state does that by every legislative session, identifying what is the per pupil funding amount. Now, there's lots of nuances here that I'm glossing over, um, because different types of students, uh. Adjust the formula in slightly different ways, but essentially the legislature every couple of years. Determines how much every school district across the state should be funded. And they look at your local property tax collections and whatever the difference is. You will receive in grant funding, um, from the state school fund to make sure that you are still receiving the full amount. That means that anything that happens to your local property taxes, making them go up or down. Doesn't directly affect the funding for the students that you have. Because it's offset by changes in the amount of state school fund that's allocated. So in this particular. So in this particular instance, this urban renewal district would certainly. Result in less school funding revenue from the or less of your local property tax revenue being generated. Than would otherwise occur without urban renewal. But that would mean more funding coming from the state school fund to achieve the same end result in 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 terms of funding per student. Thirty years from now. If this urban renewal area has been successful and all the infrastructure projects that Doug has planned here. Result in a tremendous amount of economic development activity. The old mill site has been completely transformed into an economic engine. This urban renewal area goes away and now all of this property tax revenue comes back onto the tax rolls. Be a huge windfall for local property tax revenues, including the school district. But that just means at that point in time, you'd start receiving less money from the state school fund. So for better or for worse, up or down, changes in your local property tax revenues tend to even out. Given the state school funding system.
Thank you. I have another question. With with the um increase in in population, will there be a need for more? Schools built to to house the new population?
Um, so as we were working through the facilities planning process. And then into the bond process that was occurring, actually Portland State University uh did an analysis looking over a ten year period. And if my memory serves me correct, is that your actual student enrollment population. Is going to be level over that ten year period. And so that. Included and accounted for the additional development that we're seeing that will happen up, you know, in the Springbrook Properties area, the additional residential development. That would be occurring down in the riverfront area.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on slide number seven. I was curious about what. What are the properties that are going to be annexed? Um so that some of the properties are going to be annexed and. Um that you're going to remove all unincorporated properties. So I didn't know what those properties were.
Yeah, so what what transpired between June of last year to where we're at today? Is that we have been working with the mill site owner and so they annexed their property that was within the urban growth boundary. So that's now all within the corporate limits of the city. We worked with the Oregon Department of Transportation and we annexed the bypass. Essentially from Shahealan Creek all the way over to the realigned Wilsonville Road. There were five properties south of uh fourteenth street and waterfront street. Baker Rock, the city had two properties and there was another one and we annexed those. What did not get annexed because the property owners chose not to was Rogers Landing. The old landfill, a property to the west of the landfill. Three properties up along the railroad tracks and College Street. And then there was one property up off of Winooski Street that was split. Half of it was in the city, the other half was out and they chose not to annex. So we've taken those properties that did not want to annex and we've taken them out of the proposed urban renewal district. And then Nick had to go through the task of doing redoing all the financial modeling based on all of those changes.
So Doug, when they did not wish to be part of that. In their growth boundary, do they have an opportunity to change their mind down the road at some point?
They could, Mr. Chair. Um they could come to the city later. So what what occurred is when we did the riverfront master plan, uh we indicated to the property owners, we had, there was a window. And if you jumped into that window, the city would prepare all of the annexation materials, all the legal descriptions and so forth. The property owners just needed to sign the annexation applications. So the mill site, ODOT, and some others chose to do that. For those that did not choose to jump in at that process at that time, they could petition the city at a later date to annex their properties. They would have to go through the steps of hiring their own consultants to do the annexation, prepare their legal descriptions and all the other required documents. Now, the next part of that would be. Question often comes up, well, could those areas be added to an urban renewal district in the future? And the answer is potentially, it it would depend. There is a statutory limitation. Uh on how many additional acres we could add into an urban renewal district. But the ones by and far that chose not to annex are already tax exempt properties under a public ownership. Or they are leased to a public entity and so they do not pay property taxes.
Thank you.
Doug, I have two questions. Um first. Now that you've revised it, is there anything the board needs to? I know we approved a partnership with you in this. Do we still have to vote, take another vote or?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Director, you do not have to take a vote. So tonight is an informational presentation about where we're at. If you as a board have a desire to provide comments to the city council. I would need to receive those by the end of the day on March twenty eighth, but it does not require you to have a vote. Uh in this process. And so we will gather up any and all comments that are provided by taxing districts. We will share those with the city council at their public hearing on April eighth and the council has an obligation by state law to consider. Those comments that are submitted and they can accept, reject and or modify the urban renewal plan proposal.
Okay, uh and then just uh one other thing, you know, I've heard uh from different community members uh. Reservations about this plan. And I guess the shape of it that tends to take is that, you know, you look at uh these narrow houses that are going up. And the density goals um that we have. And they say that um you guys are trying to turn us into Portland, basically. You know, uh people don't even have enough room to park their cars in front of houses. And so I just wonder if you, how you respond to that um assertion.
Yes, so um, yes, we are seeing more what we call skinny homes. They are, if you were down in the riverfront area, you'll see some homes that are on three thousand square foot lots. Those are the same three thousand square foot lot sizes north of the bypass and you place this zoned in R two designation. But what we've had occur is from the Oregon Legislature, there was House Bill two thousand and one. That was adopted. The city of Newburgh had to comply with that. So at the time it was adopted, we were a population of under twenty five thousand. So we had to address the issue about duplex development. But the city council was recognizing that we were very close to a population of over twenty five thousand. So they directed staff to also include the provisions for triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes. So all of those regulations for HB two thousand and one have been adopted. Uh those were done back at the end of twenty twenty one. So part of that is that we are being given directives by the state legislature. To allow accommodate what's called middle housing and that middle housing can come, take place in different shapes and sizes. And so we're starting to see some of that. It's not that we're trying to become Portland is we're also trying to comply with the state land use laws.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Doug. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Respect.
Any other questions for Doug, you guys?
Just a quick comment. Thanks for spending time to keep us informed on this and the changes and I really appreciate seeing the city's direction. Um and having these updates. So thank you for your time, both of you.
You're more than welcome.
Well, Doug, thank you again. That was a really good. Both you guys did a great job. Uh. Appreciate you very much. So we're moving on now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Very much. Shiloh, you're up next. Are you ready? The Nutrition Services Supervisor.
Yep. Good evening, Board Director. Um, if we want to start on next slide, so I just wanted to provide a quick update of our nutrition program. Probably hear me say this a lot. We are the largest restaurant in Newburgh and Dundee. Uh or biggest uh nutrition chain, if you would, but we are a federally funded program that operates on revenue and expenditures. So we are just like any normal business um that has to be self sustaining. And the driving fund um source of our program is participation. Next slide, please. So these next two slides is something I wanted to share that when I came to Newburg School District is some. Alignment work that I wanted to do. As of right now, we have ten schools, nine kitchens in our school district, six elementary, two middle school. High school and um catalyst. And really, I looked at and was inspired by in in an educational world, we we try to do alignment through education and make sure that there. Of what we're teaching across all grade levels. Um and it's consistent. Well, I wanted something like that for our nutrition program. So this is something that. Is going to be coming out and then we're launching and just kind of finalized. So I kind of wanted to give you a glance at this. Um this will be kind of going out in a newsletter. That Greg and I have been working on, but inspire, create, deliver, nourish and succeed. And really hitting some vision, mission, beliefs and priorities for our department. Um with our vision, nourish students with healthy meal choices, fueling their bodies, receive excellent education. And inspire students to develop lifelong healthy habits. Um our mission. Is that Newburg School um District Nutrition Department will create an atmosphere where students feel empowered to make healthy meal choices. Um by creating an inclusive environment for all students, connecting with the community and providing excellent customer service. And a belief, a hungry child cannot learn and we recognize there is a vital relationship between nutrition and education. And diversity enriches our school program through the recognition of different cultures. Next slide, please. And really kind of taking those five words and kind of reorganizing them into priorities. And I won't read through them, but I'll just pick pick out a few. It's creating a space welcoming to all students by having well rounded menu to engage students by being rigorous and culturally relevant. Nurture strong relationships with families, students and community build trust, support, collective responsibility for nutrition meals being offered. Um deliver high quality customer service and deliver department that works together, values people, equity, honesty and integrity. Next slide, please. So here's a snapshot um of our ending fund balances um of our nutrition department. And I came on in two thousand nineteen, so we had a negative. Four hundred forty thousand um negative balance going into the school year. And we were making some pretty good traction um in the nineteen twenty school year. And then COVID happened, where we kind of take some step backs with participation in March and uh losing some of that forward momentum. But what we did. Capture is our food service plan. In May, we realized that if free meals continued, that we would set ourselves up for success and putting back into our department in twenty twenty one. We ended up with the four hundred and eighty thousand um ending fund balance and as of this year. Uh end of January, we're at five hundred and eighty two thousand. And some things to think about when we look at budgeting for nutrition services. We do a lot of forecasting on participation farm, which is free and reduced meal applications. And you anticipate food costs going up every year. Maybe equipment that needs to be replaced. Um and then when you put that in a forecasting model, we do the budget for the next year. Really September and October is a really telling point. If you're going to be on track for the whole school year. So in September and October, we're looking at what our current participation is. What does this mean longevity kind of plug it into a forecasting model? And where does that leave us at the end of the year? Um. And then you get to see where prices adjust and then there's, you're you're monitoring all year long, but then also really. Fine combing it towards the end of the year because in June, you have to anticipate that our expenditures are higher than our revenue. Because we usually end up um our payroll cost increased because we end up doing June, July and August for payroll and benefits. Um, so next slide, please. One thing um I wanted to talk about was Titan Solutions is a nutrition software that we invested in. Uh our hope was, my hope was to launch this at the beginning of the school year and. Um, there's been a huge labor shortage and product shortage. Um so we only were utilizing some of this software. But here is a list eligibility data and processing we use for our free and reduced lunch applications. Menu development, menu compliance with USDA standards. Nutritude analysis, point of sale, state reporting features. Um, we're able to do digital menu boards and then really. What intrigued me about this was also the user interface with parents, guardians and students. And also has other things of professional development tracking um for our staff. So. We utilize the eligibility portion at the beginning of the year and we started launching into the menu analysis. Um aspect of it in the user interface with parents, guardians and students. Along with digital menu boards at um our secondary level, middle school and high school. Um so these are digital menu boards where you can do quotes of the day, um any kind of nutrition facts. Advertise your next day menu, current day. And what's nice is if you make a change in the system, it automatically updates. On the website. So if parents or students are using it. To weed out allergens or see what's being offered that day, the more engaged we are as a staff with it. The more parents and students will get out of this. So. Um in January, we kind of launched into this and there will be an email blast as well that Greg and I have been working on of what app parents. Guardians and students can download and track things. Um. One thing I want to note, the reason why we didn't launch the menu. Piece of it at the beginning of the year with product shortages. It's really hard when you're counting on a certain type of chicken coming in. Or certain products that we upload and you have parents. Relying on that product because maybe they're doing card counts or there's a soy allergy or peanut. And we're starting to see some balance. It's not perfect, but um as each month goes by, it's getting a little bit better. And for allergens, we just really been working and identifying the students and working with them as products change. So. Next slide, please. Um, this was just a big thank you to our nutrition staff and just acknowledgement this year is definitely. Um, I like to control things and always have what I'm ordering come in and it hasn't been that way this year. Um between product shortages, driver shortages, labor shortages, we've seen. Just some weird things happen this year and we thought it was bad last year. And then I really didn't see it coming this year is having all the challenges that we've had, but. Um just noting the resilience of our nutrition department. It's it's been shining all year long. Um. We've tackled every setback or challenge that we faced and you know, if we take a step back, we're always taking two steps forward. So. Uh really encouraging. Next slide, please. Um so exciting news I wanted to share. So since uh twenty twenty last year, we've put about four hundred thousand dollars of new equipment in our schools. Projected to about, we're going to be about five hundred and fifty thousand by the end of the school year. Twenty twenty one, we were able to purchase a transportation van with cooler that's helped us expand our summer food. And twenty twenty two, um which I want to thank the board for um. Approving the purchase of another transportation vehicle that has cooler and freezer capabilities. To help us with our transition for the bond constructions of the Edwards Cafeteria, but also help as a. Safety net when cooler and freezers go down at school or anything else that comes up. Um I think it is a great investment. We've been really as a department um able to capitalize on utilizing our farmer's school grant. Where in the past, we've had to give money back um to the state for not using it. Um so buying local produce. We're in the process of still brainstorming a potential working garden at Catalyst. Um, we're just trying to work around a bond timeline and apply for a grant that can be. Really utilized um at all different schools between the high school catalyst and potentially Mabre Russian Mountain View. Um so we're pretty excited about that. Still getting stakeholders involved and we'll start the writing of that grant here soon. Um and then I just kind of want to talk about our involvement. USDA USDA Commodity Council, so we have a say of what food we get from USDA. Um OCNC is a big buying co-op that we're a part of. That we're a part of their board on um measuring their procurement methods for goods through Cisco. Um, we're going to be doing a procurement uh presentation at the. Nutrition State Conference and then just through the pandemic, we've realized. Um, how important it is with biweekly check in with other directors um. In different school districts, but also regular manager meetings, talking about what's. What's coming up, what what things we need to be looking out for. Next slide, please. And some goals I wanted to list out, very excited about the Edwards bond and it's come into life as been a part of the committee and the planning process, the new cafeteria that's going to be built. And really building something that can expand in so many different ways. The potential of launching a catering department to service our community or even school functions. But also a central kitchen that can make large batches of food and distribute to schools and try to bring the scratch cooking back to school nutrition. And I will say that is easier said than done. I think the pandemic is kind of made a step back a little bit, but it's still, that goal is not, I, it's still in front of me and I still want to achieve that. So I'm pretty excited about the future of that kitchen coming up and parent engagement. I've had the privilege of meeting with parent groups from various schools about the future of our department. And I think that just continuing that outreach, I think the last few years during the pandemic, it's been hard. I've gotten to meet some new groups and some groups that I haven't checked in with a while because things have been a little chaotic, but I'm excited to, as things are starting to calm down, is to kind of re-engage in that. So. Now, I think that is it. Next slide. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got a quick question, Shiloh. First, just thank you for all of this. I think having that goal of, of scratch kitchen is, it is a lofty goal, but I think it's so incredibly important and the rewards can be just amazing for our students. So thank you for keeping that and for having those outreach discussion with the parent groups. Also, I just have to quickly say thank you for thanking your staff because consistently some of my kids' favorite people in these buildings are kitchen staff and nutrition staff. So that shows that there's a culture of support and caring for our students, I think, that can often go overlooked in some of these positions that maybe parents don't see as much as say a teacher or principal. But my question is really about when, what is the end date for the federal subsidies that, that are helping us have, be able to provide the free lunches to students?
So I'm glad you brought that up. As of, it's June thirtieth of this year, our waivers are expiring. So right now, last year, we were very fortunate to get some heads up that the waivers were continuing like last March or April. There is talk out there that this will be extended waivers for summer food and possibly universal meals for everyone and being free next year as well. I think from a budget standpoint, I will probably have our budget finalized before we get any of that news. And for me, I am going to plan on going back to normal. Going back to paid, free and reduced. I don't want to put all my eggs in that basket and say it's going to happen. But I think that we will be hearing about what's coming up. I think all the directors through the state. I think our school district, we have really capitalized on all students eating for free and kind of put us in a financial really good spot. If you look at, I would say twenty-five percent of the school districts in Oregon are actually seeing an uptick in participation. And it's, it's kind of crazy. You see the opposite for something like Portland Public Schools, Hillsborough, that they're down in participation and budget. So I really think it's just how nutrition departments are going to approach, you know, their food service plan. I know COVID protocols had some things to deal with it about their food service plan. So.
Thank you. I appreciate you being conservative on the budgeting, but fingers crossed we'll continue.
Yeah, I think that's why, oh, go ahead.
Oh, hey. Thanks for that presentation. That was great. I have a, a few questions. I, I really like the farm, the farm to fork and the garden idea. So is that, that's something that you're working towards? Or is that something that we don't have right now? Correct?
Yeah, so, some schools have school gardens. An employee from Catalyst actually approached me and had this idea and I was like, it was kind of perfect timing because we knew a grant was going to be coming up. We knew that Catalyst was getting a re-remake with the bond. And so I, I think that i- is it something that's going to happen next year? I, I think we're two years out from that, but I think it takes a lot of stakeholders. It can't just be one or two. And really trying to get buy-ins from the difference. Well, the reason why I like Catalyst, it's next to the high school, it's next to Mabe Rush, Mountain View's close Catalyst. And I think that with that amount of buy-in, you can get a lot of people supporting that program where it's not on the weight of just one person. But did I answer your question?
Yeah, and yeah, and it'd be great. Maybe that's something that the parents and student be involved with and, and work together on. I think that it, it just is so many different areas that that can. Yeah, it, not just with food, but with learn, learn how to grow things and be more self-sufficient and everything. So, and then also with the the C E P school at Joanne Austin, like what, why did we end up losing that?
So E P means beauty eligibility provision. So right now, our title one school is Edwards. And C E P means all students get to eat for free and that is generated based off data of SNAP and free and reduced information. So each year, and that's one part of my tracking for budgeting. You have your seniors that go out that have different eligibility. You have kindergarten that comes in and your eligibility percentage changes every year. So you have to look at all those pieces. And when you apply for a C E P school, it's usually good for four years. And that was before my time on coming. But what I was kind of looking through the reports of when I started is that the free and reduced information and the eligibility data was too low to sustain that as a C E P school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I, and Director Powell, I would, I would like to add if any board members that want to be a part of this Catalyst planning, please let me know as right now, I mean, parents and students will be involved. I think right now we are trying to find the stakeholders within the district and then start it kind of expanding out and, and getting more buy-ins from that. But we're, we're trying to figure out who internally is going to be kind of helping support and do the grant writing right now. And, and I totally agree with you, getting parents and students. I will not be doing the education piece of it. I just, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, someone asked me to kind of help out. But I'm just, we're all trying to guide since I deal a lot of farm to school grants. This is just kind of one area I've been a part of at a different school. So.
Looks like Rowan has her hand up.
What?
It looks like Rowan has her hand up.
For my elementary school, we had a garden. And then they would incorporate it into like the lunch line. They'd have a basket for like free fruits and veggies. Something that's super awesome to see that potentially coming into fruition at Catalyst. That's so cool. I just want to thank you as well because I know that school breakfasts and lunches are like a big high point of a lot of the high school students. So it's really great, all the work that you guys do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I have a budgetary question.
Yeah.
Assuming your assumption is correct that, you know, we're back to normal next year. Based on your operations and how things are running, what do you anticipate the ending fund balance will look like at the end of that year?
I, I'm projecting that it would probably be about two hundred thousand.
Okay. So it'll shrink by about two eighty?
Yeah.
So is that, does that mean that we are on a trajectory to be back at that negative ending fund balance in two years at that rate?
No, I'm just anticipating what, what needs to still be replaced. And based off of food costs going up, we're going to have to be conservative that we know that there's probably going to be a 10% spike in food costs next year. We're seeing a lot of contractors increasing prices right now. Our paper good prices are outrageous. I think it would be hard to maintain a three-month operating balance. As far as our operating balance, I can only hold three months at the end of the year or the state or USDA takes it back. You can't have more than three months of operating expenses. So comfortably, I want to always maintain around two hundred thousand because that's a safety net for you of equipment failures, unexpected. And again, Director Shannon, what I talked about at the beginning of the year, we do the forecast. I mean, always, I would always want to have three months operating expenses. But those first few months is super crucial to do the trajectory of where your data is and what, what you're going to end up with. What kind of adjustments can you make to your menu, paper products, et cetera? So you don't put yourself in a negative balance.
So for the last two years, when we had those big ending fund balances, did those get like forfeited to the?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
That was that rule that you can only have three months was waived during that period?
No, three months operating expenses is about six hundred thousand for our school district, for my department. So I haven't, I haven't exceeded that. This year, I'm probably going to have to take a close eye right, right now with that projection that I showed you at the end of January. That doesn't include our vehicle purchase. Some things to think about again in June, we have big payroll expenses with low revenue in June because our operating days are only 10 days. So Nikki is really good about helping me out with that.
So the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar drop that you're expecting to see in the ending fund balance, that's mostly one time because of capital purchases? Or I just, it, when I see something dropping that much, it seems like, I want to make sure it's not a trend that is leading us down to zero, right?
Yeah, I think it's, there's a few. I think participation is going to be low. Because right now, you always look at what your labor is compared to the amount of participation for each school. And every year it fluctuates. Sometimes, let's just pick a school, maybe Joanne Austin has really high participation and then they suddenly lose fifty kids a day. That's huge when you add that towards the end of the year. I just being realistic as we go to paid, free and reduced, we will see a shrink in participation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If that's the last of the questions there, I just wanted to make a comment.
I had one more question. I'm just curious. I like the idea of the new cafeteria to be able to do, to do those large batches and many other things. What made you pick Edwards School to have that new cafeteria? Was that like the best layout or, or location or?
No, we, we knew when the bond was going, we knew that cafeteria was going to be remodeled. It's been the central kitchen for summer food and part of our C E P program. Traditionally Edwards feeds about five hundred kids for breakfast, five hundred and fifty for lunch, and they feed all those students for a fresh fruit and vegetable program. So we knew and then the cafeteria, we, we knew that building was going to come down. It is super old and it's amazing to see the work they do out, out of a tiny little cooler and freezer. It's just like food goes in, food goes out and it's always empty and full. We knew with that coming down that we could dream a little bit bigger and make this possibly a central. And also as, what's the word I'm looking for is a, you know, like an emergency shelter as well where, you know, people could congregate if we needed to provide meals such as like the fire up on Shaheila Mountain that, you know, we got to be a part of. And we were cooking out of Mountain View Middle School then because that school had the biggest kitchen for the amount of volume. So we, we just saw the opportunity with that, that we could really design something that could bring back scratch cooking.
Oh, thank you. That's great.
Okay. Just before that shot will go, him and I've had a couple of long talks about, you know, politics of schools, everything going on. And it's, it's been fun to, to chat. One of the things we had that might be kind of a healing thing in our, our district was Shiloh and I talked about co-hosting a barbecue and it would be, you know, obviously the, the menu would be up to Shiloh. He's the expert, but it'd be something where we as the board, maybe some administrators, people in the district would want to serve people out in the community. And we would find a way to fundraise so that it doesn't cost the district any money. And we'd be standing there solar, solar, silo, you know, serving people out in the community. Just be a way for us to start, you know, the process to come out of COVID and politics, all this crazy stuff. And in a real positive way, food's always a really fun thing. And so we both thought that might be good. So that's just the start of that conversation. It might be coincide with Dr. Nabatney taking off back for Salem and he gets a double cheeseburger out of the deal or something like that. I don't know. But that's something we, we talked about. So think about that. There'll be lots of ways to do that. Shiloh would be, you know, in charge, but we would be there to serve the community. So, Shiloh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on. We are doing pretty good time waste, guys. We're going to under current legal expenses with Nikki Fowler. Nikki, are you ready?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I won't read this word for word, but I was asked to give a snapshot of where we are as far as legal expenses and an idea of what I know and don't know, to be straight about it. So the first paragraph is talking about a maximum coverage of twenty-five thousand for cases that fall under injunctive relief defense. We have three of those. And where it was my understanding to begin with that is twenty-five thousand per case. It is not this twenty-five thousand for all the cases that come up, come at us in that area. So we've already spent that. So anything beyond now for those three cases is coming out of pocket rather than general fund. Next paragraph, we've spent to date forty-six thousand, six seventy-one. Those are, that's actual money out of the district at this point. Oh no, sorry. That was wrong line. That's if we've spent forty-eight thousand, six seventy-one on legal fees. So that's in the third paragraph. The second paragraph is talking about our services through Alameda E S D. So through Alameda E S D, we are part of a consortium for legal services. And so when you see Lisa working with us, that's what that falls under. So we pay one amount regardless of how much I call and harass her. I request information around reviewing RFPs. We use, utilize her for negotiations when we go through that process. If I'm dealing with HR situations and I need to verify or interpret the CDAs to be sure I'm following things correctly. All of those things that I can run through Lisa, just as a, that double check and, and advice on anything. This year, we've utilized her far more than expected. She's involved in every meeting. She's involved in putting the board packets together. So we've increased that amount to the E S D to sixty-seven thousand. Because we have been taking far more of her time where other districts are not allowed to utilize her quite as much. So that was a fair thing to do. And so back to the third paragraph, we've spent to date forty-eight thousand, six seventy-one. Also, we have invoices submitted that are not yet paid for another seventeen thousand, fifty-two dollars. And that calculation is through December twentieth. I have not received invoices for January for the most part across the board from our various attorneys that we're utilizing right now. Currently, we have approximately nine active complaints that were filed with O D E that we're, are being responded to. What we don't know yet is how much extra legal advice we'll need for those various complaints and where, where they will lead. So that's a big question mark out there and trying to answer this question as far as, you know, where we're going to land with legal fees. And so the last paragraph, in consultation with legal, legal advice, I was asking, I asked, how much could we possibly spend in these different cases, these different claims? And so the answer was ten thousand to two hundred thousand per case. So that really, that's some wide variance right there. So in looking at that, it really, it's a stab in the dark as far as where those could end up. So all in all, I put out there, you know, three hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand estimating for next year. And I say that just because this is what we know right now, but I don't know what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. What other things may pop up between now and then that, that we have no idea might be brewing out there at this point. So with that being said, I would be budget. Um, so with that being said, I would be budget wise, I would budget at the high end to be safe. Or I guess as safe as I can be, I'd budget at the high end to be sure that we're covered going into next year. And I guess that's it in a nutshell at this point, are there any questions?
I have several questions. Um, what is the, the invoices for seventeen thousand dollars for?
Um, those are for Tyler Smith. To date, as far as I know.
All right, and how many um? What kind of free legal services do we have available as?
Right, so that's what I, you know, when I was referring to the services through Lamity SD. That's why we joined Willamette, um, or utilized their uh, legal services last year. Um, just because it is such a great um, value. And also um, Lisa in particular, you know, she has dealt and gave legal advice to school districts for years. She worked with OSBA, she has the background um, that she knows policy, um, negotiate, all those pieces that are very specific to schools. Um, so when we receive advice, we receive advice with a lot of um, background to it and a lot of history. Um, but yeah, I mean, I've, I've asked her. Questions just completely across the gamut, whether it's a board policy question, whether it's an HR. Um, discipline question or RFP and purchasing kind of question, it's all over the place and she helps us do the research. Um, helps us identify the ORS that might be related to it if we need to really document something. And so that's utilized through our credits, um, through the ESD.
And do we have um, legal, legal fees or legal services through pays?
Our insurance company? Yes, we do there as well. Um, in particular, they do require uh. If we are in a place where we're going to terminate or disqualify an employee. Um, we have to call them beforehand, we receive advice beforehand. Um, otherwise we have to pay a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible if we get sued. So anytime that we, we're going down that road or we think it might end up there, we start calling them and they provide advice and they provide. Um, any suggestions, the documentation or further steps, they review our CBAs. Um, and that's all part of their service that we don't have to pay additional for.
And do you know if any of the, the board members contacted these free services prior to um? Contacting Tyler Smith? And, and developing this policy that were, that is causing the, the legal problems?
Not that I'm aware of, they did not come through me to request any of that information. Um, so I'm not aware, I didn't, have not heard um, that anybody reached out to them directly.
Okay, and my last question is, um. Using the high end of the, the budget amount, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. How many teachers would that money cover?
You know, I would say probably because typically if we're in a budgeting process, if we have to adjust the budget, we have to. Lay off our newer teachers which typically are lower on the pay scale. They might be in the ninety to a hundred thousand dollar range. So you could be, you know, four to five um, staff members for that dollar amount.
All right, thank you so much.
Um, I have a question, um. Uh, has Tyler been paid any services yet? For his work?
I have not received any invoices directly. So no, he has not.
So Nikki, do we pay, uh, so you said uh, through Lamity SD for? Like going into the year we budgeted forty-six thousand, six seventy-one, eighty-nine? So that was the amount we were going to pay, no matter what. And Lisa does a great job too, so that's, it's not really free. But it is legal. Right?
Right, right, it's not free, um, we pay out of credits. And I'd also say that by the way it's designed, if I have a question, I could call Lisa daily. Whereas if I'm paying three hundred dollars an hour, I'm not calling daily. Um, so that service is um, very, um, very helpful to school districts because we, we need a lot of advice.
So this is, this is another question I have too is like, so when we're looking at our total, you know, together these expenses. For the legal liability estimated at three to five fifty. Um, so where are these lawsuits, I mean? Where are they coming from, they're coming at us that we're having to pay all this?
So those are the um. The three big lawsuits, so that's the NEA one, the ones that you, you're aware of that have been out there. Um, so those are the big question marks, we don't know, they're just beginning, we're just beginning in the response stages. I would have no idea where those will end up. And so.
I was asking who is, who, who is suing us?
Who is suing us? There's several different parties that you're aware of.
So I mean, but that, that is coming from the Newburgh Education Association, so they're. Union, this union suing us.
One.
That's one. And then we have another educator. That's also suing the school district. And then the third one I believe is a group of citizens or is it's another educator that's suing the school district?
Uh, my understanding that's a group of citizens.
I was just curious. It's kind of like we're uh. Okay, no, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on it.
I think people need to be clear too on the fact that, that there are board members suing community members and while that's not part of this discussion. Uh, Dave, you've, you've brought it in and I think it's important for people to recognize that if we're going to talk about the specifics. But I thank you Nikki for your, your attempt at trying to figure out how do we budget for these unknowns, I appreciate it. And I also, um, coming off of a budget committee meeting this, just today. Um, I, I would really hope that the budget committee and board would, would be very conservative and, and setting aside. Um, enough money to cover the damages that these will incur on our students.
Chair Brown, if I may interject for just a very quick moment. Just to clarify regarding Tyler's bills, we have in fact received invoices, we have. Um, in fact had a conversation with Tyler and Tyler has taken a, ha- has by, been gracious in. Um, indicating that at this particular time, those invoices do not need to be paid immediately. And so we are, uh, we're kind of in a holding pattern on those, but those are in the, they are in the mix and they are, have been received. Um, and we have them, so I just want to be clear where we are on that so that it's. Um, so that there is any confusion around those, it's just that Tyler has granted us the time to um, to not pay those right now.
And Chair Brown, just to be clear also, none of the lawsuits allege damages, so none of them have damages as a component to the lawsuit.
Um, yeah, and, and Tyler's absolutely correct, I believe the one um, that we do have to potentially, although I agree with. Um, that we have some very strong defenses in these cases, there is some requests for equitable relief. And a number of these which would allow the judge broader discretion in terms of how. How he, he or she would award damages under that, I think that would make sense Tyler, doesn't that when they, when they seek. A more equitable statement, it allows the judge to determine what might be the remedy that would solve the problem. Now, I personally believe that that's not going to become an issue because we're going to have some successful results in these particular cases, but. Just to be clear, I think there, while there isn't pleading damages, they do leave it open. For some equitable um, resolution from the judge, which could have some monetary aspects to it.
Thanks Lisa. Any more questions?
I, I have one more, um, Nikki, when, since we didn't plan for this in this year's budget. What, what fund i- is the, the extra money being spent on legal fees coming from?
Um, it'll be ha- have to come out of the general fund, so we're overspending that line. Um, I'll need to watch it carefully to see if I need to transfer in from other functions anywhere that there's a, a gap. Or anywhere that there's a little leftover um, budget, we'll have to look at those. Um, but thinking back to our budget conversation when we um. Submit appropriations thereby function, so one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, so I'm looking at those as a bucket. Um, and watching those to be sure that overall, um, we're in compliance. Um, but certainly the legal line will be, will be overspent. It is already overspent. At this point.
Thank you so much for your, your dedication and your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, Nikki, thank you very much. We are into old business, uh, we're in an executive search update from Lisa Freely, Lisa, are you ready to go?
I am Chair Brown, thank you for um. Introducing the subject, um, we are at a point where um. Uh, we sent out the survey to students. Um, at the um, high school and the middle school, that data should be, um. We should have uh, the results of that data in the next week is what I anticipate based on the timing that OSBA. Um, indicated they would be able to collect and summarize it. So we will have the data for you to look at, at your next board meeting. Um, as we continually go through this um, search product process, so hopefully. Um, students got in there and gave us some good feedback and um, will give us something to work with, fingers crossed, I saw that Rowan. Um, I'm with you. Um, secondly, we are to a point that we need to get a brochure out um, to begin the recruitment process. And as we agreed um, at the last meeting when I sent the brochure out, if there were some substantive changes or concerns with the brochure. Um, I would bring it back for consensus, which is what I'm doing this evening, um, because we had um, some proposed um, changes. I did send those out, I know it was very last minute. But um, I was out at the office when I re- received the um, suggested changes and I got it all together and got it out to you first thing this morning when I got back into the office. Um, but hopefully you had a chance to look at them because those are the changes. Um, that are being proposed to the original brochure that I sent out to you, right? So I had given you a copy of, today I had sent you a copy of the brochure that went out originally and the proposed changes. Um, real quickly, the proposed changes were to add in um, some of the priority section. Um, background in teaching and building administration, referring to instructional leadership as preferred. Some language that would talk about ensuring that board policies are equally and fairly enacted and enforced. Some language that would um, talk about this board's strong preference that the person who accepts this position. Um, live in the community if um, if possible. And then um, the more lengthy change, change, which is why I sent it to you, is in the language. Um, describing the district that was on the second page and I sent you the language that was proposed. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions, but ultimately folks, what I need from you is a consensus as to what. Um, we want, because I'd like to be able to send this um, to the consultants I'm working with and to have it out by tomorrow so that we have a good thirty days. Um, for it, for it to be out there circulating and recruiting.
I would like to move that we accept the first version of the brochure. Um, leaving the, the um, information about the district as is. And um. I would be open to the, to the various portions, but I, I feel. That um, to, to retain the original brochure. Dot info, um, verbiage.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Do we actually need a motion for this, Lisa?
Hi.
Is it more information? Not necessarily, I mean, does it need to be board action, I guess is my question?
I, I, I need to have the board, um, whether you operate by consensus or you operate by um, a motion, I don't have a strong preference. What I need is for everyone to have the ability to um, say to me that this is the brochure that I'm able to. Publish on behalf of the district. Um, in recruitment, however you wish to do that, I, I mean, if you want to go around and everyone kind of says yes, this is what we want to do. Or if you want to do it by motion, I'm fine with either of those, I just need. I need some resolution to the sections that I've, that I sent you so that I can move forward with a, a final version.
I like the second version that you did and I would. Say I would go for that one.
Same.
Revised version.
May I say that, that the second version um, does not comply with our policy JBB. Educational equality. And that it, it, I think it, it's a. I, I understand the, the, the wanting to change dot wording of, of our mission. But I think that is a discussion that we need to have with the new superintendent. And the community in, at a whole that this is, if you look at the, the wording in JBB, our, our policy. It, this wording in the, in the first um, brochure is from that. And that to, this is not the time to discuss policy changes. This, and I feel that this second version would open us up to, to um. Lawsuits, like when you say equal, does that take care of the ADA weighted um? Money's and, and um. It, it just, I feel that being, being equal would, would open us up to lawsuits with the American Disabilities Act. I feel that autonomy or, or um. Having students have more autonomy to their, to their um. Education is very um, ambiguous and doesn't explain what we mean by that and could put as. The, the district, I, I think it just needs to be looked at. And we need to, to realize that it. It doesn't need to be done tonight, it's a policy issue. And, and it's, it's not for us to be changing policy tonight.
I do not agree that the revised language would violate our policy in any way and I would support the revised language.
You disagree that, what did you just say?
I don't believe this brochure in any way violates policy.
Lisa, what would you have to say to that?
I, I haven't looked at JBB and it sounds like Director Perez has, I, I do believe. Yeah, there, there are requirements that we provide. Access to an educational program for all students who come to us irrespective of. Age, race, gender, disability, et cetera. I don't know, um. To be very transparent, there, there is obviously a difference in a conversation. Between equal and equity and I think that is the heart of what this conversation is and I don't believe that the failure to include. Equity would necessarily um, violate policy. It potentially calls into question the um. If you want to argue that there's some question to be raised, whether or not we are in compliance with the all student belongs policy that exists. But I don't know that this language as written is clearly a violation of that. As it's, as it's written. So that's my quick answer right off the top of my head with having, without having looked at JBB.
But, but i- if it's not clear. Is this the time to be moving forward and another, another statement from the board? Without really thoroughly investing time and energy? And legal a- and, and um. knowledgeable people to to look at all the angles of this? In lieu of what we've just discussed about what how much money we've we've had to incur because of legal problems, because of policies that we we rushed into. It it doesn't it it doesn't seem that that it's the right time. I I agree, we should we should look at this policy, look at this wording and see if we come together as 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 a board to work through this this. But but this is just seems to me something that that is is ill conceived and 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 fast fastly thrown at us without really being able to to do due diligence.
So Lisa, you were trying to get a consensus. Do you want to go around to everyone else and see what they think?
Yeah, I do. Understanding that obviously if we can't get a hundred percent consensus, you know, at least something that gives me some you know, as your as your representative that, you know, we've got a solid consensus. So I'm going to, I'm going to start because Director Penner, you are at the top of my screen. So I can keep track and move my way around. So.
Sure, no problem. Thank you always for the time that you've spent putting this together. I agree with Director Pirros that the first version is one that that I support. The second one, yes, to all the concerns around the providing equal opportunity for all students to see based on their own hard work and individual merits. It's clearly meritocracy. And I have that that's obviously, I think, where the the board, the direction, the new plan, somebody was asking, what's the plan? I think it's laid out right there for us, and I have big concerns with it. And I think it's a problem to put it in a superintendent's search information and not even have that discussion as a board. So that's my first issue. My second is the issue around the board would strongly prefer that the person appointed live in the community. We have this. This comes up every single time we have a superintendent search. And the issues I have around it is I think it's antiquated. I think it was developed as a cultural norm in a time when we had mostly primarily single breadwinning families. And now we have families with partners that may have commute times that could vary. We have we have superintendent candidates surely that will have children that could be already enrolled and established in other school districts. And I think it's really unfair to say we're going to choose a candidate over another based on where they live. And I know there's arguments in favor for having the person be a strong part of our community, which I completely support. I think having a superintendent that's active civically, that forms good relationships with leaders and parents and students and community members, all of that's incredibly important. But the actual logistics of asking somebody to uproot their lives, their children's lives, possibly their partner's lives to live in this community, I don't think is necessary. And I think for all the board members who we all do live in this community, and we know as we've seen in some lawsuits, the board members have a very hard time serving and living in this community. And I think it's unfair to ask that of a superintendent. So I would I would really, I have a difficult time standing behind that one.
Thank you. Director Powell.
Yeah, I like the the only problem I had like I when I wrote to you was just that paragraph. And I like the way that you addressed that and reworded it. Other than that, I was fine with with everything else. So.
Director Pirros.
I would I would not, I would like the first version. And I would also agree with with Director Penner that the the requirement preferring the superintendent to live in the in the area. I've had three, I've lived under three superintendents, and the first one, Dr. Rajic was very involved. And she lived here in Newburgh. The second, Dr. Kim Lepalankasbrasa, lived in Newburgh, but was not very involved. But Dr. Morlock lived out of Newburgh, but was more involved than than someone who lived in Newburgh. And and he's still involved in Rotary. And I don't think if he's the right, he or she is the right candidate, we should turn him off because he doesn't live in Newburgh.
Thank you. Director Shannon.
I support all the changes. I believe the language about having them live in Newburgh was it would be preferred, but not a requirement. I think that's reasonable. I think it would be better if our superintendent lived in the community and was part of it. So I don't have any problem with that. I think the language replacing the the original language in the brochure about the district has less ideological baggage packed into it. And is less divisive. And I think it really it might wake some people up if they are seeing this conversation about what the contours of the debate that we've been having are, because the folks in the minority here are opposed to equality and meritocracy. And she's Director Penner is absolutely right that that is what we are striving for in this district.
Thank you.
But it's that, is this the right time to have this discussion? I don't feel it's the right time to have this discussion. That is why I'm against this, that you are are trying to bring this discussion now without really engaging the community and the full board to really search through what you want to accomplish through this.
I think it makes a lot more sense to do it before you hire a superintendent than that.
I I really, you you are just jamming this through again.
I'm not jamming anything through. I'm putting forward the options that I would prefer, and we're going to vote on that.
But you did not do it in a timely fashion so that we could have um, community discussion and and really look at the merits and look at what you're trying to do.
That's incorrect, because I sent my changes on Tuesday. Okay, so I did, I was timely. And the fact that we got them today, that's not on me.
He is correct. I I would have to look as to when I got them. I believe they arrived when I I was out of the office as of let me, let me go here and I will.
This issue is not whether you got it to us or not, it is much deeper culturally on the board, clearly.
Okay. Because I I attempted
Yeah, and I'm not I'm not laying at your door, but I'm just saying I didn't wait until the last second to turn this in. This is a rush job. I'm trying to jam through. And we had an election about these issues and the community voted. And so that that conversation did happen, Director Pirros.
It did not happen regarding this this change of direction and that you, okay. If if you wanted equal you and and hardworking according to to their abilities. How if I need a Chromebook that has screen saver or screen reader? Because it's going to be equal, does everyone else need that same thing? How are you going to to deal with the equal part portion of the the conversation?
No one is or has ever suggested that students with special learning needs not have those special learning needs met. But it should be based on learning needs, not group identity. Period. Hard stop.
By what? Not by what?
Group identity.
Can we move on? I think this is being rude to Lisa, and she was asking each of us of our own opinion. We've already spoke. So now it's up to the other two board members to have their say.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa. Finish finish up what you want to to talk to each other about.
I I just, I think we we to some degree, we just need to be able to get through. I I want to be sure that you have enough time to get through the rest of your board meeting as well. Chair Brown, you are the next on my screen.
I I agree with the second update version. It's not a deal breaker for me. When we go through the whole interview process, we're going to have all these questions to ask the the person applying for the job. Living in the district is great. If they don't, and they're the great best candidate, that's who I'll vote for. But I'll I'll take the second side of that, the changes.
And finally, Director DeHart.
Hey, thanks, Lisa.
Last but not least, I saved the best for last.
Yeah. You know, I I prefer the changes, but I'm the same as our chair. You know, I I can go either way with this, right? I just want to get this sent out there. We've been without a permanent superintendent for months now, and we need to just get this approved and and get the the notice out there.
Okay, that helps. Let me ask a question, because I've heard a couple of board members indicate that the living in the community is not you know, kind of like a ride and die kind of criteria. And I appreciate Director Shannon, the use of the word preferred in there. Would you be comfortable if I had a conversation with the consultant who's going to help us? And if he indicated that it might be a stumbling block? And he wanted to kind of maybe structure that a little bit more loosey, shall I say? A little more flexible? Would you be okay if I took some liberties with the reference to the living in the community? Or is it a much bigger issue? For the other? I heard from Penner and Pirros that it wasn't, and I heard from Brown and DeHart that it would be nice, but it wasn't an essential component. I did hear from Director Powell and Shannon that it was probably a higher priority. So I guess I'm speaking to you too.
I'm okay with with them living out of the district as well. I would prefer, you know, in the area, but I'm okay with either.
And I'm not going to automatically strike it. I'm going to ask the advice of the consultant who does the recruiting pieces of this to see if he thinks it would have an impact on our ability to recruit qualified candidates. And if there's a better way to maybe state a a desire, but not not too heavy of a requirement. Director Shannon, where where do you fit in that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will go with the changes that were proposed. I'm going to get this out to the consultant. Maybe if it's not too late tonight, but for sure, I will get him out to him tomorrow morning so that we can get this process started. I'm working on gathering the other thing that we will ultimately need the board to make a decision on. We've stated that we are going to pay a competitive salary. But we are going to need to provide some insight to the people we're working with as to what the range of that might look like. I've been trying to gather some financials and salary data for you to look at. I'm hoping that I will. I haven't been very successful. There isn't a lot of data out there. Then some of the numbers that I am coming across, most of you probably are aware that Greater Albany, they hired at about two hundred and twenty thousand, which is significantly above where our current where the superintendent's salary was prior to this. There are some data, there are some data points outside of the Portland area, just across the border that are also in the two hundred thousands. So I'm trying to gather some additional based on size and location to see if we can get some information that will help us make this decision. So just keep that on your radar. It's something that we will probably need to deal with at our next board meeting. But just know that the numbers are kind of big right now when we're looking at them out there. Okay? Any questions for me about process?
Got her.
I really, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Guess what, though? You don't get much of a break here.
What? Just kidding. Okay, next. As you were all present, Director Penya announced her resignation, which was effective immediately on February eighth. You do have a policy that speaks to the process for filling that position. The very first step of that is that we need to declare a vacancy. And to that point, we do need a motion, a second, and a vote to declare the vacancy and direct the administrative staff to advertise that vacancy. And that advertisement needs to be for a minimum of twenty days. And the goal will be to fill it from some from people that are in that zone. If there isn't anyone from the zone Director Penya was in, then the board would have the option of appointing from the district at large. And the other piece that you need to think about, because part of this advertisement will ask interested candidates to send us letters of interest if they are interested in filling that board position. The other decision that the board needs to make is what process do they want to use to screen candidates, right? Because it's not unusual for boards to conduct interviews of people who have applied to fill that that position. It's important to know that you have to conduct those interviews in public. And those are all part of a public meeting. They aren't an executive session situation. So they're all done in public. And then based on that, those interviews, if you choose to do that, you as a board would vote, and the majority vote would then identify who the applicant was that you would place into that position.
Lisa, the position is open until May of twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? They they would would feel they wouldn't fill her full term?
No, the way that the the rules on this work is that generally speaking, you would fill until the next regularly scheduled election. So in this particular instance, because Director Penya had just been reelected and had was in the very beginning of a four-year term, there will be an election for this position in May of twenty twenty-three. But the election for that position would then be for two years, Director Pirros. They would then, if elected to that position, they don't begin a four-year term. They basically fill the remainder of of Director Penya's term. And then they would run for reelection, should they choose to do so, at the same time when Director Penya would have run for reelection.
Right, right. And the the application process, there is a paperwork, additional paperwork to that process. They you send a letter to be that you're of interest, but then you're given a packet to fill out. Isn't that correct?
That's a very good question. I don't, I I we would have to verify the individuals qualifications as an elector for either the zone or for the district as a whole. And I'm sure that there are paperwork that the district has. And I have not had a chance to talk to Nikki about whether there's a packet or even Shanna, whether there's a packet there that the district has used. But we would definitely figure that out, Director Pirros. The idea behind it is for us to notify the community that there is a vacancy, that we're looking for interested applicants and candidates. And to have that candidate communicate. And usually those letters are directed to the to an administrative assistant. Often the superintendent's assistant. So I mean, we would talk about whether it would go into, we would talk about where we want them to go. But they would come into the district, we would collect them, we would then prepare a packet that would go out to the board for you to review at a public meeting and then go through the process, identify the process you want to use in selecting. Whether it's interviews, questionnaires. However you guys want to do it, we can make it happen. But you just need to, we need to get the announcement out and get interested candidates to communicate with us.
Well, I was one who fulfilled who filled a board position, and I submitted a a letter of interest and then received a packet of requesting information and my resume and interest. And then then the board interviewed the three candidates in the board meeting. And I'm I must say it was it's it's like going to your own funeral to have the board decide right in front of you your qualifications and everything. It's it's quite quite daunting.
We could definitely, if you guys have specific like a resume or a statement of what they would bring as a member of the board and why they would be, why they should be selected as a board member. And you guys can define, my guess is, Director Pirros, the reason you provided that was because that was the process the board set up for the time when you were filling that vacancy. So, you know, there are definitely you guys can define the process, you can define what kind of You can define what kind of information you'd like to receive to help you make an informed decision. And that can include interviews, right? A lot of boards do, in fact, conduct interviews for candidates who are looking to fill a vacancy on a school board.
So Lisa, if we start this tomorrow, 20 days takes us to the 15th of March, am I right?
Yeah, but we won't be able to start it tomorrow, Dave. We have to advertise. So we have to figure, we can get the advertisement ready, but I would be shocked if we would be able to hit a paper by, by tomorrow, right? You have to have, you have to hit the print deadlines and you have to, it has to publish. So we would have a publication date. I don't, when does your local paper come out?
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays. So I bet that we've got a cutoff toward the end of the week, which means our publication date, Chair Brown, would probably be the second, and it will be 20 days from that.
Okay.
So, March 22nd would be, which?
Lisa, I have a couple of questions. The bullet point about considering people from other zone or from the district as a whole, if we don't get any applicants from the zone, does that mean that we're asking people who are not in the zone to write letters of interest during that same period? Or is it, we have that period open, we don't get any interest, and then we open it back up to the whole district?
If, you know, my preference would be to indicate to people that if you're just interested, send it to us, right? We are looking for someone within that zone, but if no one from that zone is interested, we will consider candidates outside the zone. I'd like to consolidate it all into one process so that we don't have to readvertise.
Okay.
I think there's a way to communicate what our expectation is and then still leave the ability to go and select someone from outside the zone.
And does the board get some input similar to the brochure for the superintendent on what the advert will say?
I think my recommendation would be the advertisement would be very basic, right? That there's a vacancy that we are advertising for candidates who would be interested, that it is for this zone, and this is the location of that zone. But even if you're not in that zone, please feel free to apply if you're interested. Because if no one from that zone applies, we would consider candidates from outside the zone. And the deadline is this, and this is who you send it to. I mean, it's, I would not anticipate that it would be, that there's going to be a whole lot of recruitment type language that exists. It's factual.
Okay, good.
And I would, and I would work, Director Shannon, I would probably work off a prior posting that we had done, right? To just replicate it factually.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if there is editorializing that you find in that one, it would be nice for the board to at least get the chance to have input in that. I'll move that the, to declare a zone for vacant due to board members resignation, direct administration, to take the necessary steps to advertise the vacancy for a minimum of 20 days.
Second.
Okay. Thank you for the, Lisa, for explaining all that. So we will take her to a vote. All those in favor of declaring a 20-day vacancy, please raise your right hand. I see six to zero. Lisa, thank you very much.
Thank you. And be thinking about the process. Like, would you guys like a letter of application, a resume? Is there anything in particular that will help you kind of screen candidates? And if, let's just do real quickly around the room and indicate what you might want to have sent. And I'm going to start again in the same order. Director Penner, what would you like to see a candidate submit?
Yes, both of those things, resume and also a letter of interest.
Okay. Director Powell?
Um, yes, a, a letter of interest and possibly a resume. I don't know how important that is, but yeah.
Director Pirros?
I would like to, to use the same process in past practices of, that, that you check with Greg about what, what forms we use. But I would like a letter of, of interest, resume, and, and why they're interested, or explain why they're interested in being, being what they want to bring to the table.
Okay. Director Shannon?
A letter and optional resume is fine with me.
Director Brown, Chair Brown?
I would say a letter, optional resume.
And Director DeHart?
Yeah, just background, reason for interest.
So we could, it sounds like there's a consistent theme of resumes and a letter, and we could indicate that the letter would focus on why they would be interested in being a board member and what they could bring to their role as serving on the Newburgh School Board. Would that be some nodding of heads? Would that work?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll get that moving.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, you get a break. Go ahead. Next up, we have potential impact of ending the mask mandate prior to March 31st, and this is with Dr. Dave Novatny.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Brown, members of the board. Last Wednesday, I was meeting with Chair Brown. We were looking at the agenda, solidifying the agenda for this particular meeting. And he and I had a conversation about making this type of presentation. I readily agreed, but then realized, basically, we had Thursday and Friday of last week to work on the presentation, and people started to leave for a long holiday weekend. And so it was really difficult to get information for this presentation. I also found that in researching this topic, it was like trying to get my arms around a big tub of Jell-O. This is a squishy issue, and I tend to deal better with concrete sequential type issues. But I'll share with you what I have assembled this evening. Next slide, please. The, the first issue I think is really important for us to do is to acknowledge what a difficult issue this is. This is a polarizing and emotionally charged issue. And we're hearing this play out in school districts across the state of Oregon, and it's starting to gain some momentum with school districts wanting to consider making masks optional prior to March 31st. And we also know that the current political climate makes this really challenging for local school board members and school superintendents to navigate this issue successfully. Next slide, please. And the last acknowledgement that I'd like to just express is to say thank you to volunteer board members like yourself who have to kind of face these really challenging issues and kind of weigh their pros and cons and make the best decision possible for the school district and your community as a whole. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and talk to you about the research, what we found out as far as the potential impact and consequences for a school district if they decide to lift the mask mandate prior to March 31st. Next slide. The background information, I just wanted to clarify that I've consulted with Oregon Department of Education, Oregon Health Authority, Oregon OSHA, Oregon School Boards Association, Yamhill County Public Health, the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission, and the Newburgh Education Association. I also consulted with legal counsel for your district, which is Lisa Freely. And I also revisited the intergovernmental agreement that we have between the Willamette ESD and Newburgh School District for Superintendent Services. Next slide, please. And then you can go on to the next one. So as far as potential consequences, I have these in buckets. So the first slide is the potential consequences that a district could face from the Oregon Department of Education. And I have to be honest with you, this consequence is not very challenging for a school district to navigate. Because what the Oregon Department of Education will do if you decide to lift or make masks optional prior to the 31st of March is that we will have a temporary loss of access to federal stimulus funds. That would be our ESER funds, one, two, and three. But, and this is an important part of this, the funds would become accessible once again when the district returns to be in full compliance with the law or the state mask mandate ends. So for a lot of school districts, they hear that and they say, that means temporarily we cannot access our ESER funds, but we could, once again, effective March 31st, because that's when the mask mandate ends. So that's not a real significant consequence that's causing a lot of problems for school districts right now. Next slide, please. This is more substantive. There are consequences that can be levied by Oregon OSHA. In my professional opinion, I think it's likely that OROSHA would investigate a school district if they lift the mask mandate prior to March 31st because of the potential risks to students and staff. Now, we also have to acknowledge that OROSHA doesn't necessarily have the ability to conduct timely investigations and then levy any potential fines. We know that this has played out in other school districts like LC and other districts like that. We haven't heard of any substantive fines in that particular case, but we know that there are investigations underway. I think what's going to be important for this board to understand is OROSHA will look at potentially a board making masks optional prior to March 31st as being either intentionally or willfully negligent. And that could lead to a fine that could mount to a significant amount. And as you can see in the slide, that's $126,000 in change. To be clear, Oregon school districts have not received that significant of a fine from OROSHA. But once again, we haven't really seen an OSHA fine for a school district where a board has made masks optional prior to March 31st. Those investigations are still underway, and OROSHA is still deciding what those fines could be. And then there could also be daily fines for continued noncompliance that would range from $250 a day to $12,675 a day. So you can tell there's a lot of room in all of these figures and a lot of unknowns.
Dr. Novatny, that range, the 250 to 12,000 per day?
Yes.
Is that per offense or per violation or just all of the offenses at that school for the day?
That, that is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Next slide, please. There's also potential consequences from the Oregon Health Authority, but I was unable to verify what those fines could be. I was able to verify that OHA can pursue fines for noncompliance, but I was unable to verify the amount or range of the fines that they can levy. So that one still needs to be looked into a little bit further. The next slide is more substantive. Let's move on to that one. There will likely be TSBC investigations and consequences for a school district that lifts the mask mandate prior to the 31st. Because that would place individuals that have a TSBC license in an extremely difficult situation. And those individual teachers or administrators that have that TSBC license would have to make a decision to follow the direction of the school board or follow Oregon law as required in order to maintain their professional licensure. That really is a significant issue for a lot of school superintendents, school administrators, and other licensed professionals, even classroom teachers. TSBC is required by law to investigate any complaints that they receive. We believe that complaints would be filed and TSBC would have to investigate a situation like that. And it seems like, as is always the case, it's going to be either the superintendent or the interim superintendent is going to be the first person to be investigated. And I think you understand the reasons why, because the superintendent is the board of directors sole employee. And so that's almost a sure thing that the superintendent or interim would be investigated. Next slide, please. I threw in a slide about potential consequences or impact from the Willamette ESD, which is the organization that I'm the superintendent for. The Willamette ESD would likely need to place some restrictions on ESD staff who provides services to the district. We've seen that play out in the Lynn Benton Lincoln ESD region that provides staff and services to the LC School District. And what they did is they had their staff convert over to providing online and virtual support because sending their staff into that district then could entangle them into TSBC investigations and other things like that. Other organizations that have staff that work in the district would have to kind of make their own evaluation, how they would respond. I know that you have social service agencies that have staff in the school. You have contracted employees, contracted nurses, other specialists that work, you have contracted subs and so on. And either those employers or individuals would have to make that determination if they could work in the school district or not under those particular circumstances. And then the last bullet, and I know that I shared this slide presentation with you in advance of this meeting, but I think you understand from the previous conversations that we've had and the intergovernmental agreement that we've entered into between our two organizations that I would need to step aside and resign the position of being the interim superintendent. It would, of course, be a violation of that agreement between our two parties, but it would likely create legal entanglements between the Willamette ESD and the Newburgh School District if you were to move forward in this direction. So probably the best course of action would be for me to step aside, and then you could figure out how to move forward with another interim superintendent. And I really want to be clear on this particular point. This is not a political statement for masks, against masks, or anything else like that. This is simply not permitting my organization, the Willamette ESD, from getting entangled with some of these legal issues. And I think you can respect that. And I think you can also respect the fact that as a volunteer person who's working a lot of extra hours to support Newburgh, I don't want my parting gift to be an investigation from Teacher Standards and Practices Commission. And so that's, that's just being really transparent, of course. Next slide, please. There are other consequences, once again, potential, but PACE coverage for the school district could be impacted. So in working with legal counsel from the Oregon School Boards Association, what they told me is that if a school district intentionally or willfully violates the law, it could trigger certain exclusion provisions within your coverage that could lead to a denial in coverage. Now, this is all very hypothetical. If there was an issue that services during that time period and so on, but it's an issue that you at least need to be aware of. Next slide, please. There are potential significant labor issues that you need to be aware of. Our labor partners, our unions, could and would probably likely issue a demand to bargain over the change in working conditions. I think what they would probably argue is that the status quo needs to be maintained because of health and safety concerns. And we've actually seen school districts in this type of situation where our labor partners are actually thinking about filing an injunction to prevent the school district from moving forward with that type of change in masking policies. So we have to kind of observe and see what So we have to kind of observe and see what happens in that regard. Also, the president of the Newburgh Education Association shared with me the survey results of a survey that they sent out to all of their teachers. There are about three hundred and thirty teachers in Newburgh. I think they had about a hundred and twenty five or so respondents. But out of those who did respond to the survey, sixty one point two percent of all the respondents stated that all staff and students should be required to wear masks. I share that with you as kind of an indication that their mayor, there could be pushback, okay, based on these type of numbers that I just want you to be aware of. Next slide, please. Other potential issues, this is more like miscellaneous type things. We know that individuals could file lawsuits basically for any reason, and a change like this could trigger additional legal action. We would have to work through sports. What does this mean for the Pacific Conference? Now, we know that winter sports are nearing an end, so it may be a moot point, right? But if something was changed relatively soon, when winter sports are still going on, there would need to be conversations about how do we actually logistically handle a change in one district when all the other districts are requiring masks, for example. So we'd have to work through those type of issues. Next slide, please. For the time being, at least through March eighteenth, students would have to continue to wear masks if they ride on a school bus. That's a federal requirement. Once again, that is valid through March eighteenth. And the fact of the matter is, we don't know what the feds are going to do, if they're going to extend that or do away with that requirement or anything else like that, but I want you to be aware of it. And then staff providing services to our medically fragile students. It may be necessary, it may be prudent, it may be a requirement for staff to continue to wear masks around those students in order to protect them based on their underlying health conditions and so on. That would be a process, at least in my view, that would include school staff or school nurse and the parents of the student to help us make that determination, what's best for that individual student. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. As I'm winding down, I wanted to acknowledge that the Oregon Department of Education was going to have a special meeting for school superintendents this afternoon to share some potential changes. But that meeting was postponed and will probably be rescheduled for some time next week. So I was hoping to have updated information to share with you this evening from the Oregon Department of Education, but it looks like we'll need to wait on that for a period of time. So with that, that's as far as I've been able to get in the research as far as identifying potential issues. Once again, I want to stress the word potential, but make you aware of some of the concerns that we would need to navigate if the board decides to make max masks optional prior to March thirty first. With that, Chair Brown, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that board members have.
Yeah, I think last, you know, the other day when Dr. Novotny I met, we, we talked about this since we have had so many people call in about the mask. It's, it seems to be the number one issue out there. You know, people fall on both sides of this, but as simple as we'd like it to be, it's not. I mean, you just heard all the reasons why. You know, for me, it's like I don't want the mask. I'd like to see him gone. But at the same time, you know, from Dr. Novotny on down, we have too many things to risk losing right now. And as much as I know, there's a lot of parents out there that are fired up to take the mask off, you know, five minutes from now. You know, we are under this mandate until the end of March with Governor Brown. So agree or disagree with her. She has made that mandate. We voted back in July to make mask optional. Governor Brown came out right after that and said mask, you know, the mandate came down. And so we didn't violate anything on that. We were just using our local control. And, but at this point, when you look at all the consequences of what's going on, Dr. Novotny and I talked all through those and you can see that's a long list. So I think at this point, it's, you know, for me, it's, there's, there's, we have so many other things we need to focus on. I know that doesn't make a lot of the parents out there happy with this decision right now, but I think if anybody watches the board meeting, they can see all the things that that we would lose by following Redmond and the different recommendations. And this board needs to stay focused on finding a new superintendent, needs to, you know, find a seventh board, board member. We have educational issues we've got to get back to rather than politics. And I think that this is something that, you know, I appreciate you, Dr. Day, for making that presentation to us.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
I know it's, I know it's a tough one, so I, I know we talked about that too. So thank you for just being open and honest.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. Dave on that?
I just want to point out that if, if, if we were to change the mandate, that would also affect Tisha's position. Is that correct? So, so we would be out both the interim superintendent as well as a board secretary?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other comments for Dr. Dave? I mean, if we're not going to get to that point where people are making a motion to, to do something on that, we've kind of gone through the informational part of this to move forward. But if you have a question, please ask now.
Mr. Chair, I will say that if the March thirty first date comes and goes and gets pulled away from us again, I think we should seriously consider defying the state. But for now, I'm, I'm okay with waiting until the end of March. And, you know, then the vote that we took back last July will become operative and students will not have to wear masks in our facilities anymore.
Yeah, you know, Dr. Shannon, I, I understand. I think that it's a this, this one's pretty personal to a lot of people. So it's just not an easy one, you know, whether, whatever side you fall on this one, you know, people are going to be upset on those sides, but you know, hopefully our leadership in the state will see. But I also think too, even since Dr. Novotny and I met, things have changed. It's kind of a, it's very liquid. Like he said, it's hard to get your arms around this one. It is really liquid. Things could change by tomorrow. So hopefully we'll have more updates, but being on the school board right now, you know, we have some things we need to focus on and, and I think, Dr. Novotny, you did a great job. Thank you. Any other questions for him on this?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Novotny, and yeah, I would really love to have these masks off. I'm really disappointed and, but I totally understand. And I support all the families that have called in and voiced in their concerns and I'm with you and I hear you. And, but I wouldn't want to do anything to put, to jeopardize Dr. Novotny. He's done so much for us and has worked so hard and I don't want to put him in any risk or jeopardize his position at all. So thank you for that information.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Dr. Novotny, I think too, I just to the parents out there, this is, you know, there's a lot of parents that are probably not really happy with our discussion right now. And I think that it's a you know, we're seeing a lot of these issues pop up all over the state, big time in other communities. So it's not as Newburgh anymore. But to the parents out there that are disappointed or not following Redmond, for example, we're in a different spot than Redmond. Not, not geographically, we're just in a different spot as a community. We've, we've been through a lot and we're going through a lot right now. And I just asked for the patience from all the people that called in tonight and I could hear the like, you can just hear it in the words when Lisa spoke them how heartfelt it is. So we do care a lot as a board. I've always said that every board member cares. We might do a little bit differently, but we all care. So we'd just be a little more patient with us on this and you know, even though Dr. Novotny is a superintendent, you know, at this point, we're still kind of under the, the governor of the state. And so just ask for patience and understanding of, of what we have to do as a board right now and and stay focused and hopefully this will end very, very soon. Dr. Dave, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask, uh, next one up is Lisa Friday and Tyler Smith under patron complaints.
Okay, so Tyler and I have spent some time going through the complaints that have been filed. We have a couple of them, a handful of them. We, we aren't going to be able to get through all of them in one setting. So I've attempted, I started, I went all the way back and started with the ones that were filed the earliest, say, August and September, and have worked to kind of conduct some, a review, some investigation. And then Tyler and I have come forward with some recommendations for you on these. So what I'd like to do is kind of go through the ones that we have for you tonight to get this process started. And I'm going to refer to them. They're all complaints against board members, the board as a whole, specific board members. These are all complaints that are to be heard in public session, not executive session. And so I will start with a complaint that was filed by Denise Arnold. And the complaint that she filed was related to the passage and that her concerns about the implementation of motion thirteen. This complaint has moved from the district up to O D. So she has moved the complaint from the, from the board level, which she has a right to do when there is no resolution at the local level within a certain number of days. So she has moved it up to the Oregon Department of Education. That is currently pending. We have filed responses on behalf of the district. But what we would recommend at this time is that there really is no further action needed at this. The complaint was related to that motion thirteen, which, which you have all rescinded in late, it was like mid to late September. In addition to that, it focused on the Board of Education's resolution related to the Newburgh School District, which does not have the impact or effect of being binding as a legal a, a legal order or a rule or a regulation or any of those things. It is a plea, a request, however you want to define that. So there were no legal obligations on our part as a district to alter or change our behavior, so, or the actions we were taking. So at this point, our recommendation would be to dismiss this complaint as not being a founded complaint because the motion thirteen had been rescinded and that there were no legal obligations created by the Board of Education's resolution.
Well, Lisa, you need a vote on it.
I would like to have a, well, first of all, I'd like to, well, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have because that might impact whatever the motion is.
Okay.
And then a motion would be appreciated.
How, how are we identifying these for you, Lisa, in our motions?
I would identify it by the name Arnold so that it is clear that that is the complaint that we're addressing.
I move to dismiss the Arnold complaint as moot.
I second.
So Lisa, just to be clear, you're recommending that we dismiss it because that action on motion thirteen was basically superseded by a future action. Is that correct?
Correct. Her complaint, Director Penner, was focused directly on motion thirteen, which you rescinded and never implemented. And the other part of her complaint was focused on the Board of Education's resolution, which created no binding legal obligation for you as a district.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor for dismissed, please raise your right hand. I see six, zero. Okay, Lisa, we got that one done.
Lisa, how many are trying to get through tonight?
One.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would it be possible to do a five minute break?
That's need to let everybody know. And also David on the translation, we have we don't have any potential recess to executive session, I believe. We're okay on that one. And then we have a board member superintendent and student rep comments at the end. So five minutes, we'll see you in five minutes, everybody.
So we're taking a break now?
We are, Rebecca. Five minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa.
Hey, there.
How you doing?
Good. How are you doing tonight?
Well, I had lunch at the yard the other day, so that was good.
Ah, you've got some good places out there.
I finally got to try their fish and chips.
Oh. I don't think I knew that they had fish and chips out there. Guess it's not hugely surprising.
Oh, for seven. Go on there.
Okay.
Closed every time I went.
Yeah, there's a lot of other, you know, Thai, Vietnamese, Chinese, you know, just barbecue. Not a bad place, love variety.
Yes.
Dave doesn't like variety. He's a very, uh, well, I would say toasted cheese sandwich, but I don't even think he likes cheese, just toasted, just toast.
I'm shocked.
How can you not like a toasted cheese sandwich? I mean, really, a grilled cheese sandwich, like.
I'm impressed you guys both said toasted because most people nowadays call it grilled cheese.
Yeah, grilled cheese. I love a grilled cheese sandwich.
No, you said toasted. You gotta go with that.
I did. I just, I I was trying to feel, make board members of heart feel comfortable with using the word toasted.
I know, I have to do that all the time, too.
Well, he doesn't like butter either, so it'd have to be toasted, not grilled.
Oh, my gosh.
Chair Brown, I think we're all bad.
Okay. All right, next one up here. So we have no reason to go to recess to executive session.
Nope.
That's.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just go ahead and pick up on the next one on the list. And Tyler, please do not hesitate to jump in here because we have done all the, we've done the showman's work together, so.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I did not double check and verify with David, our interpreter. If we go a little bit late, we could be ten, ten fifteen or so, ten twenty. Is he cool with that?
He's hearing you, so.
Was that question about interpreters? Interpreters are willing to stay, they said, until the end.
Okay, great. Thanks, Greg.
Baker is the next complaint, and this complaint is focused, this one arrived in August. And it is focused on the hiring of Tyler Smith as the attorney. And it is a complaint about against board members Brown, Shannon Powell, and DeHart alleging violations of the Public Meetings Law and the Board's Code of Ethics. Tyler and I's recommendation is to defer any decision on this complaint. This relates to the allegations of a public meeting law violation. It's pending. The resolution of current litigation, it is possible that the litigation will resolve the issues underlying this complaint, and there will be, need to be no further action by the board. So at this point, unless you feel a need to take action independent of our recommendation, which never makes attorneys happy, by the way, just saying. We would recommend that you just defer any decision on this and not take up this complaint at this point in time.
I move that the Board of Directors defer this complaint until the situation's clarified.
Point of clarification, Lisa, do you need a motion for this?
Now, I don't know that I, can I get a consensus? Can I at least have you all indicate that you're comfortable with deferral until, like, maybe raise just a hand to give me a show of consensus that we can hold on this one until the litigation is done? Okay, thank you.
Did did everyone consent?
Yes, there was a consensus, everyone. It was a six zero consensus, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. The next one is Barnes, and this is a complaint against Board Member DeHart specifically. And this one related to a comment that was made during a public meeting in regards to a student. I have done some work on this and had a conversation. I believe that there needs to be a couple of other individuals that I still need to finish my conversation with. And so I am going to basically report back to you that we're still in the process of investigating and that we will bring you back a more final, complete recommendation upon closure of that investigation, most likely at a board meeting to be held in in March. Betcher is a complaint against Board Members Brown, Shannon Powell, and DeHart for the passage and implementation of motion thirteen. This complaint is also currently pending before the Oregon Department of Education. Our recommendation on this one is to dismiss this complaint because no further action would be needed. This, again, falls into that category where motion thirteen was rescinded. And therefore, there was, it was never implemented and no action was taken. So the recommendation is to dismiss the complaint.
What was the name of the complaint for this one?
Betcher, B E T C H E R.
I move, we dismiss the Betcher complaint as moot.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six to zero, thank you very much.
Lisa, before you get into the next one, are you going to skip the next one? Okay.
Yep, thank you. Brookfield is our next one, and that is a complaint against the school board, again, due to the passage and implementation of measure thirteen. This one is also currently pending review by the Oregon Department of Education. We are again recommending that there really is no action, I mean, no further action for us to take. We need to dismiss this complaint because for all of the reasons we talked about earlier, which is that more measure thirteen or motion thirteen was rescinded and never implemented and acted upon.
And the name of that was?
Brookfield, yes.
I move that we dismiss the complaint as moot.
Well, while there's motion pending, if I can add this, this one also had the allegation that you all rescinded the all students belong, which is simply facts that didn't happen. It alleged there is a violation of the Board of Education resolution, which again didn't create legal standards. So this one was just both moot and not applicable.
Yeah. So I said, okay, thank you. I just want to be real clear. It had a measure thirteen. It had allegations that we rescinded the all students belong, and it alleged a violation of the Board of Education's resolution. Measure thirteen was rescinded, all students belong was never rescinded, and the Board of Education's resolution was not a binding legal obligation on the board. Therefore, we're recommending dismissal. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I believe we have a motion in a second.
Second, all those in favor to dismiss, raise your right hand. Lisa, can you see everybody's screen? I'm seeing.
Okay, Davis, this is a complaint against Board Members Brown and Shannon, again, due to the passage of motion thirteen. We are recommending to dismiss and no further action be taken for the reasons we've stated on the earlier ones, which is measure thirteen was rescinded and never implemented.
I move that we dismiss the Davis complaint as moot.
I second.
Dave, could you be sure to call out the results of the vote so that Director Pyros knows?
Yes. All those in favor of dismissing the Davis complaint, please raise your right hand. And I got six zero on that one.
The next one is Tokstad. This complaint is against the school board for voting to not enforce the mask mandate, voting to reopen the policy to address the every student belongs, and voting to pass motion thirteen. Okay, so it included three components. Our recommendation is to dismiss the complaint as unfounded because while you voted on the mask mandate, you never implemented any action that was contrary to the rules or regulations that were in place. To also dismiss because the policy every student belongs still has been in place and remains in place, and it was never rescinded. And that because motion thirteen was never, because it was rescinded and never implemented, that issue is moot. So it, all in all, for those three reasons, unfounded for two of them, which is the mask mandate and the every student belongs, and moot on the measure thirteen, we are recommending that you dismiss this complaint.
What was the name on that complaint?
Tokstad, T O K S T A D.
I move that we dismiss the Tokstad complaint as unfounded and moot.
Hey, those in favor dismissing the Tokstad complaint, please raise your right hand. Vote is six zero, thank you.
Next is Moriarty. This complaint is against Board Members Brown and Shannon, and it alleges violations of the Public Meetings Law and the ethics violation. A review of this complaint is focused on the hiring of Tyler Smith. The recommendation is, again, to defer any decision related to the allegations of these public meetings violations because it's pending litigation, and this is not one that I need a vote on. I just would like to see a consensus that you're all comfortable deferring this pending, while the litigation currently moves forward.
All right. Everybody's raising their right hand again.
And I see a six zero consensus on this. The final one for tonight is Schwartz. This is a complaint against Board Member Brown. It alleges a violation of policy BBFA, which is the conflict of interest policy. And the conflict of interest that was identified is the Chair Brown continued pushing for the employment of staff who were not receiving a vaccine. And because he has a wife who is employed by the district, it could have had an impact on her employment with the school district. Our recommendation is to dismiss this complaint for the following reasons. Generally speaking, there is a class exception under policy BBFA, which arguably could have been applicable in this situation because any decision would not have just impacted Board Member Brown's wife. It could have impacted numerous districts within the employee, within the district. But also, a key element of the recommendation is that ultimately no vote was taken on this. Therefore, no decision or action was taken, and declarations of conflict relate to disclosures prior to the public official's vote. Consequently, no violation of policy occurred.
That was a Schwartz complaint?
Mm-hmm.
I move to dismiss the Schwartz complaint.
I second.
Lisa, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
So. Yes, you may.
You're saying that we should dismiss the complaint because, not necessarily because of the conflict of interest, but because no action was actually taken that would have impacted or or had a situation where that conflict of interest would have come into play. Is that correct?
Correct. A conflict of interest is required to be disclosed, disclosed prior to a vote or prior to any action being taken, right? So if you're going to take action, you have to disclose. In this particular instance, there was no action that was proposed to be taken or any vote that was taken. And so there was no conflict of disclose at that point in time because because that event never occurred. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
There is still an argument, though, that it would fall under the potential for the class exception that exists for collective bargaining, you know, similar to like, it allows for board members who have family members who work for a school district when they're covered by a broader group than just the single person to still vote on those issues. It would all be very fact specific, right? And we'd have to analyze the facts when that issue came up, but the potential for that exists as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yep. Any other questions?
I think we lost Dave.
Uh-oh.
Oh. There he is. I think you have a motion and a second on the floor.
Give me the chair round.
Okay, lost power there. Sorry, guys. Director Shannon, can you bring me up to speed right there?
We have a motion and a second to dismiss, what's the name on the complaint?
Schwartz.
All those in favor dismissing this Schwartz complaint, please raise your right hand. I see six zero.
Okay. I think we're good tonight.
Thank you, Lisa and Tyler for working through that.
Yeah, sorry, we weren't able to get some of these addressed months ago. But with the process and lack of staff and everything, there was no opportunity.
Well, we'll bring some more back to you as we continue to work through them. We will prepare just very brief letters that will go to these, which are required to be sent. So Chair Brown, you will need to stop by the, once, we'll let you know. But once we've got the letters ready, you'll need to stop by the district office and sign them.
Okay. Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
With that. Okay, we're going to jump into, we're almost done. WSD does a little different, and so we're kind of following their their guidelines there. So that's why we have comments from the board members, superintendent, and student reps at the end, so at the start, so. Director Penner, board comments.
I always like going first, thanks. I just wanted to quickly say thank you to our student reps. I appreciate you sharing your perspective and the time you spend in service to your fellow students. It really is impactful, and I hope that it can be a huge learning opportunity for you all. So thank you for being here. And then, as always, thank you to Lisa and Tishri and Dr. Novotny for your service to the students in Newburgh. I really appreciate your time and efforts to keep our board running.
Okay, thanks, Director Penner. Director Powell.
Yes, I also want to thank everybody and thank the student reps for their presentation tonight again. That was really helpful. And yeah, I just want to keep it short, and I kind of like having the comments. I like having the comments at near the end so we can get the business at hand addressed. And yeah, so anyway, I like that forum, so thanks, bye.
Thanks, Director Powell. Director Shannon.
I don't have much to say. I just wanted to say thank you to Lisa and Tyler for helping us work through that backlog of meritless complaints that we had dumped on us. It's nice to get some of those dispatched. So thank you for all the hard work on that. And thank you to Dr. Novotny for continuing to help get us in a good place here.
Thanks, Director Shannon and Director Pyros.
First of all, last, last meeting, when I was speaking, I didn't realize I turned off my video. That was to not to be disrespectful, and if I, I was unmuted, and so when I hit the mute button, I also turned off my video, so I apologize for that. I do want to thank the the student reps so much. We value your voice, your input, and anything we can do to support the students. That's what we're here for. I also thank Dr. Novotny and Tishri and Lisa for the work they do for us. And I also want to thank, Director Shannon just said the meritless complaints. At the time, they were not meritless, and and we thrive on our our community. At the time, they were not meritless, and, and we, we thrive on our, our community speaking out and keeping us on our toes. And any time, they, they became meritless because time passed. But they were using their constitutional right to speak, and we should never disregard that. And so I just want to say that I'm, I'm in the minority at the top point in the board, but I'm not going to stop speaking up for all students and all parents. And I also want to say that, that today is National Bus Driver Day. And I, I want to thank all the bus drivers who daily drive our students to and from school. And also all the work they did working with Shiloh, delivering food to, to families last year. And I appreciate them very much, and, and everyone should give their bus driver, if they have a student driving, riding the bus, a big heartfelt thanks because they're, they're an additional piece to the education that goes on in the, in the school district. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Director Pyros. Director DeHart.
Yeah. Sorry, a- as always, you know, there's so much support that goes on behind the scenes. You see it here tonight. I just wanted to thank, once again, Dr. Navatni, Lisa, Tyler, Tishri. Thanks for all the support, all the hours that you're putting in to bolster us up in the dark time of need. And Shiloh, thank you for a wonderful presentation. It's got me thinking more about the nutrition and food services and what we do. So thank you for that and for all the, the presentations. I, I, I feel like we're coming out of a dark period, and for me, I, I see hope. And I'm just anxious. It feels like in my short period on the board, we've gone through, like I said, tumultuous times. But I think we can be better for it, and I think the future looks bright, and we'll be able to focus more on academic success and the students' needs and supporting our teachers and administrators and everything we do here in the community. So I'm excited to, to get back to some normalcy and get through these, these hard times.
Thanks, Director DeHart. I'll conclude it, a couple of things. I'd like to apologize to Lisa Freely and to, to Todd Smith, you know, my communication with you guys got to be better when it comes to stuff that you guys are experts on. So I'll, I'll try to do better for you guys. I appreciate you guys a ton. And it, it just helps so much to have you guys, also to, to our lawyer Rob there tonight. He was really encouraging, uh, doing his job. Uh, I also say, you know, thanks, Dr. Dave. He gets lots of thanks, so I'm really gonna go with Trishri on this one. Trishri, thanks for making him look good. I appreciate you doing that. The student reps, you guys did great. So hopefully we get more of that kind of stuff for you guys, so you guys can feel like you're having more of an impact on the board all the time. And you guys did really well on that tonight, and that's a, a great subject to, to keep the, the conversation going on. I'd like to say to all the parents out there that, you know, we're gonna make this district solid and healthy. And for the mask thing, this is really still a tough one. Again, I just ask for your patience just a little bit longer, and, and we'll get through this. I'm a music buff, and so I'm gonna leave you guys with this. I, I go through different themes in music. But I think Director DeHart just said it, you know, we can be negative all we want, we can be complaining. I got a couple of emails this week from people who, who voted probably yes on a recall that we had great talks. And, and so probably my favorite Beatles song is Come Together. So no matter how bad we are, or where we think we've been, you know, coming together or something we can do. And no matter what side of the, the fence you're on, just listen to that song, it'll, it'll lift you up a little bit. So, and you might not like the Beatles, that's okay. But, uh, you know, with that, good meeting, long meeting. Thanks for everybody's help on this, also to Nikki Fowler. She had a lot to, to go through tonight, so Nikki, thank you for that. Thanks for all the board members. And we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
What about Dr. Navatni and the student reps?
Oh, gosh, Rebecca, I'm so tired, I forgot. Dr. Navatni, I guess you've got to look good here, so we got to have you talk.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, it takes a team to make me look good, Chair Brown. So I just wanted to say on behalf of the staff of the Willamette ESD, we get invested, and we are invested in Newburgh. And it really is an honor and a pleasure to be able to work with you and to work for you, and to be able to come together and improve education. So it really is an honor. That's all I wanted to say.
You said come together, so you must like the Beatles. There you go. I'm sorry about that. Rebecca, thanks so much for saving me on that one. I appreciate that. Uh, and then most important of all, the student reps, go ahead. I'll go with Madison first. Matt, are you ready?
Uh, yeah. I just wanted to let you know that first of all, my camera's off because my computer died, and so I'm like on my phone now. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone and for giving Rowan and I the chance to do the segment about bullying. It was really interesting to do something like that, and if there's anything that you'd like us to do, something like that again, then just let us know, because it was really interesting. But thank you.
You bet, Maggie. Great job. Rowan, are you, have a comment there tonight?
Um, yeah, similar to Maddie. Thank you guys for giving us an awesome opportunity to speak. We'll be on the lookout for things that students are finding, maybe issue with or problems they're noticing as well in the school. And we'll make sure we're looking out for that so we can present other things as well. And yeah, if you have anything you'd like to propose as well for us to try and find more about, we can look for that. And then thank you to Director Pyros. I didn't know it was Bus Driver Day, so I'll make sure to thank mine tomorrow morning and in afternoon. Thank you guys very much.
Uh, with you two, I guess I'd challenge you, like, if, you know, one thing would be, keep on the bullying thing if there's something, you guys have an angle on that. And then also the culture, you know, at the school, too, just, that'd be another topic you two could chat about. And, and that'd be awesome. If you have something that you want to bring back to the next meeting, just let us know as quick as possible. If you think you can be ready, and you want to do the slides and everything, so that would be awesome. Thank you, guys. So I, Rebecca, again, thanks for saving me there. I'm ready for my bowl of cereal for dinner. Thank you so much for everybody for being here tonight, long meeting, and appreciate everybody, and we will, we'll see you at the next meeting. Night.